Let us all put ourselves in the presence of the Lord. Dear Father God, we praise you for this day and your purpose for bringing us together. But first, dear Lord, let us thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the gift of life each day.
Yeah, what you make? Did you did Tom go? Honorable Ramon Rodrigo Gutierrez of the Partilist One Rider, Honorable Faustino Michael Carlos D. III of the Fifth District of Isabela, Honorable Eleonore Bulot Begtang of the Lone District of Apayao, Honorable and Vice Chair Daphne Lagon of the Sixth District of Cebu, Honorable Baby Aline Vargas Alfonso of the Second District of Cagayan, Honorable Maria Lucille Nava of the Lone District of Gimaras, Honorable Ricardo Cruz Jr. of the First District of Taguig-Pateros, Honorable Maria Amina Catherine Agarau of the Fourth District of Laguna, Honorable and Vice Chair Maria Rachel Arenas of the Third District of Pangasinan, Honorable Fernando T. Cabrero of the Third District of Albay, Honorable Maria Feabunda of the Lone District of Eastern Samar, Honorable Adrian J. Advincula of the Third District of Cavite, Honorable Dante Garcia of the Second District of La Unión, Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernández of the Second District of Naguna, Honorable Yolochio Rodriguez of the Lone District of Catanluanes, Honorable Maria Delmar Maxino of Partilist OFW, Honorable James Jojo Ang Jr. of the Partilist Oswag Ilongo, Honorable Carl Nicolas Carri of the Fifth District of Leyte, Honorable Charis Ann Hernandez of the Lone District of Calamba City, Honorable and Deputy Majority Leader Wilter Palma of the First District of Sambuangas, Cibugay, and Honorable Mary Mitzi Kahayonui of the Second District of Caloocan City. Thank you very much for your presence this morning, Comsec. May you acknowledge the presence of our esteemed or resource persons in this meeting this morning.
Good morning Chair, honorable members of the committee. In attendance for today's meeting of the Committee on Health are the following from the Department of Health, Mr. Manuel Villasteros, Dr. Between Reyes, Dr. Melissa Sena, and Ms. Mr. Jose Gerard and Ms. Maria Christina Raimondo. From the Field Health, Dr. Mel Santillan, Mr. Fernando Antonio and Ms. Merla Rose Reyes. From the Department of Social Welfare and Development, Ms. Irene Domblaw. From the Commission on Higher Education, Mr. John Kabilso. From the Technical Educational Skills Development Authority, Ms. Gemma Suriaga. From the Philippine Council for Mental Health, Dr. Christine Irina Abari. From the Council for the Welfare of Children, presently present, physically present right now, Your Honor, is Yosek Angelo M. Tapalas and Attorney Rafael Recalde from the Department of Management, led by Ms. Nihal C. Abdul-Rauf Pacalna. We also have in attendance today, Your Honors, our guests, esteemed guests from the various autism organizations or associations, from the Autism Society of the Philippines, Ms. Mona Magno Velus, Ms. Joyla of Fresia, Ms. Diana Ocampo, Ms. S. Yucicam, and Mr. Danko. From the families of individuals with neurodevelopmental disabilities, Mr. Alejandro S. Cabason Jr., I think they are physically present also, Ms. Priscilla Victoria Cabason, and Mr. Red Ian Ligot and Ms. Wilma Ligot. From the Boundless Possibilities Foundation, Ms. Josephine Palomares. From the Autism Partnership Philippines, Ms. Iris Rodan Nacionalis and Ms. Rhoda Amorao Abuluna. From Autism Hearts, Ms. Flori Mepeso. From the Elad School of Potentials Therapy Center, Mr. Dan Denmark, demopedist. That would be all for now, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Comsec. Good morning, distinguished colleagues and esteemed resource persons. We have six bills of national significance and one local bill of equal importance. As since most of the authors of the bills on autism are still not present, we will proceed with the Nagi Isang Local Bill, who, whose author is now here. So we will tackle first the bill on the establishment of a general hospital in the Municipality of San Junisio, Province of Iloilo to be known as the Northern Iloilo General Hospital and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 7843, Honorable Raoul Tupaz is now recognized for his sponsorship speech.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Chair, to the members of the committee, other sponsors, guests. Sa ating lahat po, sa ulitin magandang umaga. On behalf of my co-principal authors, namely Speaker Martin Romualdes, Congresswoman Yedda Romualdes, and Kong Jude Asidre, it is my honor and privilege today po to sponsor House Bill Number 7843 entitled "An Act Establishing a General Hospital in the Municipality of San Junisio, Province of Iloilo to be known as the Northern Iloilo General Hospital." The proposed general hospital po shall be a Level 2 hospital under the full and direct control, supervision, and management of Department of Health. It will serve as an end-referral hospital in the Fifth District of Iloilo catering to patients not only from Iloilo but even nearby provinces like Capis. While there are local and district hospitals po in our area, the need for a general hospital becomes imperative as we embark on the full operationalization of Republic Act Number 1123, otherwise known as the Universal Health Act. The challenges brought by the COVID-19 pandemic teaches us to invest more on health facilities. Based po sa census of May 2020, just for comparison purposes, ang city of Iloilo po with a population of about 450,000 has six private hospitals aside from the regional and provincial hospitals present in the area. Yung district po namin which is farthest from the city with the biggest population already exceeds the number ng population sa Iloilo city po of the same census. At present, patients coming from the district will have to travel two to three hours to go to city hospitals. Patient coming, patients coming from the island barangays po, about 30% ng local residents po namin ay nakatira sa mga islands. Will have to travel longer. Going to the mainland alone will account for half a day at the minimum by both on good weather. Due to the occupancy rate, patients will not be readily accommodated and are even refused sometimes admission. Worse po, Mr. Chair, some patients would avail nalang po of the medical services in Rojas City, in nearby province of Capis because of travel time. The general hospital therefore will not compete with the existing regional hospital but will decongest the regional and provincial hospital as well as private hospitals in the city of Iloilo and would bring essential medical health services closer since referred patients na coming from our area would no longer go to the city. Overall, the proposed general hospital will complement the existing district hospital, expand the medical services, and address specialized cases. Eto pong proposed na general hospital will also complement the promotion of various tourist destinations in the district considering that our district po in terms naman ng tourist arrival based on DOT record, kami po ang pinakamataas if i-exclud po ang province of, ang island Uburakay. It will be reassuring to tourists, both domestic and foreign, that medical facilities are available in times of emergencies. Lastly, we have included po yung budget which could be taken up in another committee if ever this would be given consideration by the committee, Mr. Chair. Before I end, Mr. Chair, may I also request my, our explanatory note which is rather technical to be also included as part of my sponsorship message. In view of the foregoing po, the approval of House Bill 7843 is earnestly sought. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Chair, to God be the glory.
Thank you very much, Honorable Tupaz. Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the physical presence of Honorable Bonifacio Bosita of the Partilist One Rider and of course, Honorable Paul Daza of the First Lone District? First District of Northern Samar. Thank you very much. And on Zoom, we have Honorable Ralph Wendell Tulfo of the Second District of Quezon City, Honorable Larnie Lavín Roque of the Fourth District of Bukidnon, Honorable Rodolfo Ompong Ordánias of the Senior Citizens Party List, Honorable Maria Victoria C. Copilar of the Sixth District of Quezon City, Honorable Romelo Kid Peña Jr. of the First District of Makati City, Honorable Ernesto Junisio Jr. of the First District of Manila, Honorable Florida Rita Robes of the Lone District of San José del Monte, Honorable Salvador Pieto of the Sixth District Bulacan, and Honorable Jane T. Castro of the Second District of Capis. Thank you very much for your presence. We now listen to the comment of the DOH, Dr. Melissa Sena.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Your Honors. Iloilo has a bed-to-population ratio of 1:859, which is well within the ideal ratio of 1:1,000 bed, one bed per 1,000 population. While we recognize that there will be gaps in Level 2 and, Level 1 and Level 2 beds by year 2025, hence there is a need for additional hospital beds. We propose that the hospital proposed to be established be under the supervision and control of the province. This is in line with the healthcare provider network so that the provincial HCPN is able to deliver seamless and continuous care from primary care facilities up to the hospitals. Also, there are already two Level 3 DOH hospitals in Iloilo and this serves as the end-referral hospital of the healthcare provider network, not just of Iloilo but also of the neighboring provinces. I will also recommend upgrading the Level 1 hospitals under the supervision of the province and also to increase its bed capacity. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Dr. Sena. May I ask, how many beds are you proposing for the Level 2 hospital?
We will differ with the proposal later on of the DOH, Mr. Chair. But, but from our end, we hope, we respectfully would like to insist and to really move for the establishment of a general hospital, at the very least, Level 2 in our area, considering, Mr. Chair, I have not really discussed this personally with the local chief executive of the province but only with the members of his economic team. And almost all of the members are in agreement that even the provincial government could hardly, could hardly and sufficiently provide quality, basic health services to all the congressional districts. In fact, if I am not mistaken, I was a former vice governor of a province, about one-third or one-fourth of our budget would go to hospital management operations, which at times would affect the general direction really of the provincial government. That's why we came up with this proposal, with this bill, with the support of all or the overwhelming majority of the local officials of my district composed of 11 towns with a population of about 500,000. So may, may this be considered, Mr. Chair, and we would like to thank you for this time.
Thank you, Honorable Tupaz. We'd like to listen to the Regional Director.
Yes, yes po.
Do we have a Regional Director of Region 6? Dr. Dr. Subaan? Are the Dr. Subaan, you're now recognized? Dr. Subaan? Yes, please proceed. Nakamute kayo, Dr. Subaan?
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Representative Raoul Tupaz, Congressman Tupaz. Good morning to all. Yes, sir. Yeah, the Department of Health Center for Health Development Western Visayas will seize the importance of the hospital because this ensures accessible, quality hospital services to the local residents and visiting tourists, with a prime consideration into each of our areas whose post-COVID-19 economic recovery is anchored on the establishment of effective support system such as the provision of help and other basic social services. Well, however, Chair, for DOHs to operate such facility may be contrary to the concept of devolution. But we are with Congressman Tupaz in the desire to put up such facility. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Subaan. Mr. Chair, for this, we support for Congressman Tupaz. Any motion to?
Second motion, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion to approve House Bill Number 7843 by Honorable Yap and Julie Seconded by Honorable Pancho. Hearing no objection, the House Bill Number 7843 is now approved. Congratulations. We now proceed with the the bills, six bills, all dealing with autism. Just a brief statement. Autism is a neurodevelopmental condition affecting a person's communicative and interactive abilities and symptoms often manifest from early childhood. At the moment, there is no identifiable cause for it and therefore there is no cure. According to the Department of Health, cases of autism spectrum disorder in the Philippines have, have been steadily climbing in the past 10 years. The number of Filipinos on the spectrum has ballooned from 500,000 in 2008 to 1 million in April 2018. And that is only from the limited statistical tool. Meanwhile, the World Population Review reported that the increase in autism rates by country in 2022 showing the Philippines having autism rates of 81.8 per 10,000 people or one in every 122 people. Numerous studies also show that autism imposes a significant economic burden on Filipino families, particularly the minimum wage household earners who spend a higher proportion of, proportion of their budget by around 21% on autism-related services. Moreover, personalized treatments such as applied behavioral analysis, speech therapy, occupational therapy, and verbal behavioral therapy remain financially inaccessible for many patients. These figures are a cause for grave concern. The state is duty-bound to strengthen and promote the optimal wealth and well-being of people with autism. To this end, the House Committee on Health shall hear today the six bills that will seek to establish a comprehensive autism care plan. The Chair will now recognize the authors of the the six bills and their sponsorship speech. We now call on Honorable Ed Vic Yap for House Bill Number 6686. Honorable Yap, you're now recognized.
Good morning to the Honorable Chairman Siriako Gato Jr., my dear colleagues, distinguished guests, and all resource person and attendees of this hearing. Along with my co-authors, representatives Eric Yap, Paulo Duterte, Jocelyn Tulfo, and Ralph Tulfo, it is an honor to sponsor House Bill Number 6686 or the Autism Cooperation Accountability Research Education and Support or CARES Act of 2022. Autism Spectrum Disorder, or also known as ASD, is a developmental disability disorder caused by differences in the brain attributing to problems in social and social communication and interaction and restrictive or repetitive behaviors or interests. Despite the enactment of Republic Act Number 7277 or the Magna Carta for Disabled Person, which recognizes and protects the rights of disabled persons, we still lack of specific legislation that will cater to the actual needs of people with autism. Hence, in pursuit of, of the state's duty to provide cares and appreciation to Filipinos and with ASD, given the broad coverage of disability spectrum, this bill seeks to increase awareness and proper understanding of ASD to provide access to affordable therapies and education, employment, services and support to people with ASD so they would be able to live independently within the community, minimize or completely eradicate discrimination and promote inclusivity within the community. In view of the foregoing, the approval of this bill is earnestly sought. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Ed Vic Yap. We now call on Honorable Ziya Alontoa Diong for House Bill Number 8011. Honorable Diong, you're now recognized.
Paldu Billahim, Minasya Tani Rajims, Bismillahirohmanirohim. Salam alaikum warahmatullahi talai wabarokatu. Morning everyone. The Honorable Chairperson Siriako Gato Jr. and the members, honorable members of this committee. Mr. Chair, it is my distinct honor to sponsor in today's committee hearing, House Bill Number 8011 or entitled "An Act Establishing a Center for Autism and for Other Purposes." And may I also say thank you, Mr. Chair, for scheduling this measure in today, in this morning's committee hearing. Mr. Chair, autism is a complex lifelong neurodevelopmental condition arising from variations in the brain and nervous system. It is characterized by differences in social communication and the presence of restrictive, repetitive, or sensory behaviors and interests. Rather than being a single disorder, Mr. Chair, it encompasses a spectrum of conditions sharing these core symptoms. Today, Mr. Chair, I stand as a proud advocate for the rights of individuals with autism and as a parent, a parent who cherishes a child with autism. As parents, no one knows our children better than us, especially during those tender years. You get to know them, their mannerism, their moods, their likes and dislikes. Imagine Mr. Chair creeping horror. Imagine Mr. Chair, the creeping horror of slowly realizing not only that your child is different but they are different in ways you cannot describe. The confusion that sets in, the little devil on your shoulder that accuses you of being a bad parent. Imagine the powerlessness of knowing that your child is different but not knowing how best to parent them. Regardless of the, regardless of the immense love and care I poured into my child, the inability to provide the necessary support and assistance was a heartbreaking reality. This is a personal issue on my part, Mr. Chair, for I have a child with autism spectrum. Moreover, Mr. Chair, it is deeply disheartening to realize that society at best Moreover, Mr. Chair, it is deeply disheartening to realize that society at best is ill-prepared and at worst indifferent to the needs and aspirations of my child. No parent should have to go through that. It is for these facts that I wholeheartedly support and perhaps with my colleagues here would champion this bill. The needs and accommodations required by individuals on the autism spectrum are as diverse and unique as the colors comprising the light spectrum. Ranging from minimal guidance to lifelong support, the spectrum encompasses a wide array of strengths, challenges, and abilities. It is crucial to understand, Mr. Chair, that given the opportunity, a vast majority of individuals with autism possess remarkable potential to become productive contributors to society at large. A center for autism, Mr. Chair, would stand as the pivotal focal point, a beacon of hope and empowerment dedicated to fulfilling the needs of individuals on the autism spectrum. It would also serve as a comprehensive hub, bringing together expertise, resources, and specialized services to provide these individuals with the necessary tools and opportunities to thrive. Within the walls of a center for autism, Mr. Chair, a multitude of essential services and supports could be offered. Early intervention programs would ensure timely and targeted interventions during crucial development stages, setting a strong foundation for future growth. Educational resources would be tailored to accommodate diverse learning styles and provide inclusive educational environments fostering academic progress and social development. Mr. Chair, through this legislation, we embark upon a challenging journey of acknowledging, prioritizing, and accommodating our fellow citizens with autism spectrum. It is our unwavering acknowledgement of their intrinsic worth as individuals that propels us to establish this center for autism in this country. With fervent hope, Mr. Chair, we aspire to create a future where every person with autism is granted the opportunity to pursue their self-fulfillment. While this bill may seem like a drop in the vast ocean of obstacles faced by individuals with autism and their families, we fervently pray that the ripos it creates transform into a rising tide. These waves will usher in a more equitable, compassionate, and inclusive society that embraces and supports individuals with autism spectrum. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Magandang umaga po sa ating lahat. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi talai wabarakatuh.
Thank you very much, Honorable Zia. We now we now call on, we now recognize Honorable Marisa Delmar Magzino for House Bill Number 7892 for her sponsorship speech. Honorable Magzino? Nakamute po kayo, Honorable Magzino? Nakamute?
We can see you, but can't hear you, Honorable Magzino. Thank you so much. You can hear me now, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed, Honorable Magzino.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Paul, Mr. Chair, to our co-authors for the Bill of Autism, to our colleagues, to our resource people. Our House Bill Number 7892, providing for protection and welfare benefits to persons with autism and for other purposes. Autism, also known as Autism Spectrum Disorder, or ASD, is a developmental disorder characterized by two most common challenges affecting persons afflicted with: one, deficits in social communications and interactions; two, restricted or repetitive behaviors, interests, or activities. In extreme cases, anxiety and depressions may also appear. While there is a growing incidence of autism among Filipinos, there is currently no national data tracking system that focuses on the state of autism in the country. However, experts and advocates in the country have estimated that there are close to 1 million Filipinos, just like our chair said, last April 2018, and with the autism, of which only 10% are diagnosed and only 5% are receiving appropriate interventions. A registry for autism is needed to improve current knowledge and understanding of autism to conduct thorough and complete epidemiologic surveys on the affliction and to plan for and provide services to children with autism as well as to their families. For this purpose, the bill mandates the Department of Health to establish a program for early screening and detection of autism to provide appropriate services to children with developmental delays and to ensure that certain and central PWD registry is updated accordingly. Most significantly, Mr. Chair, are under the bill, all persons with autism are to be deemed persons with disability and shall be entitled to all benefits accruing to PWDs under existing laws. With this provision, the following laws will equally apply to persons with autism: one, RA 7277, the Magna Carta for Disabled Persons; two, Republic Act 10524, expanding the positions reserved for persons with disability; RA 10754, expanding the benefits and privileges of persons with disability; RA 11036, Mental Health Act; RA 11228, providing for mandatory field health coverage to persons with disability; RA 11650, instituting a policy of inclusion and services for learners with disabilities in support of inclusive education. Notwithstanding the applicability of this existing law, if the bill is enacted into law, House Bill Number 7892 still specifically provides for the following benefits in favor of persons with autism: protection against discrimination in educational and training institutions and insurance coverage; provision of equal opportunities for employment; mandatory field health coverage is sponsored by the government; protection in cases of disaster and emergencies; reasonable access and accommodation to transportation and legal assistance. Finally, Mr. Chair, the state should develop public awareness on the problems of autistic persons and promote a supportive environment among communities to enable autistic persons to live with dignity and enable them to function independently and contribute productively to our society. In pursuit thereof, the bill mandates the Philippine Council for Mental Health to develop and regularly update a national autism care plan to respond to the needs of persons with autism and their families and for the guidance of stakeholders in the public and private sectors. For this reason, Mr. Chair, my esteemed colleague, I request the honorable members of the committee and my co-authors for the approval of House Bill Number 7892 authored by this representation and maybe a PWG later on. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, OFW party list, Congresswoman Marisa Delmar Magzino. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Honorable Magzino. Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence by Zoom of Honorable Franz Promarin, a deputy majority leader and from the third district of Cason City, and Honorable Midicua from the lone district of Kirino. May we now recognize Honorable Paul Dasa to sponsor in behalf of the author, Honorable Representative Geraldine Roman for House Bill Number 229. Honorable Dasa, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I do that, I'd like to commend you and the committee for taking up these bills relating to autism. I'm hoping that the stakeholders will support the various bills, and I also would like to commend the various authors who have filed these various bills. It's been a growing problem in the Philippines and, as you said, in the entire world, and I believe that the Philippines as a nation, as a society, is a kind, gentle nation, and these bills, I hope, will eventually be consolidated and passed the committee and hopefully become a national priority. Having said that, it's my honor to to move that the explanatory note of House Bill 229 be the sponsorship message of said bill authored by the Honorable Geraldine Roman. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Dasa.
This is just in addition to the House Bill, Mr. Chair. May I recommend that we don't only consider the health condition of the child with autism, we should also give importance on the education of the child with autism to really protect and secure the future of the child. Siyempre, 'yung parents po, hindi natin alam kung hanggang kailan sila nandyan to protect their child. So, kung we will give them a chance to go to school, at least there's an assurance that there's really protection on the part of the child with autism, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Pancho. We now call on Honorable Patrick Michael Vargas for House Bill Number 5923 for his sponsorship speech. Honorable Adyong?
Mr. Chair, may I respectfully move that the explanatory note on House Bills Number 3979 and 5923 authored by Representatives Villa Forte Jr., Miguel Luis Villa Puerta, Uri Bata, NCO VIII, and Patrick Michael D. Vargas be considered as the sponsorship message of these mentioned bills, Mr. Chair. So move.
Thank you, Honorable Adyong. We now proceed with the comments of our resource person. First on the list, we now call on Ms. Mona Magno Velus from the Autism Society of the Philippines. Via Zoom. Ms. Velus. We can see you, but we can't hear you. Baka nakamute kayo, ma'am.
All right, perfect. I hope you can hear me now, sir.
Yes, please proceed.
Maraming salamat po sa lahat ng mga mambabatas natin na nagbigay nitong mga bills na'to. We commend you all for your efforts, and this is reflective of the growing public concern for autism. Now, in 2019 po, the Philippines participated in the ASEAN Autism Mapping Project, and during that very extensive consultation across the Philippines, we did sessions in Manila and in the Visayas together with Congress. We are happy that since, and I can also share the framework that was the output of that process. For since then, we are happy that many of the concerns of those on the autism spectrum were addressed through the inclusive education law as well as the universal healthcare law. And I know that we still have a ways to go, but we are happy that developed. Now, the way forward from this point, as a suggestion, we are hoping that our laws will calibrate with the United Nations Disability Language Guide. We should avoid words like "suffering from autism," "afflicted with autism," "patient with autism." Because autism is not an illness, nor should we look at it from a purely medical perspective. There are no vaccines or pharmacological interventions that will cure autism, and we should communicate autism as a natural variation of the human condition that we all have to harness and understand. If we want to wipe it out, it is ignoring the collective experience of 1 million Filipino families who live with autism. Our family members po do not need only medical help. We need social protection, participation, and development. It is also, I think, good to note that autism is not a childhood condition because children grow up to be adults with autism. Stakeholders to our children's well-being, because I am a mother to somebody on the spectrum, are families, developmental physicians, speech pathologists, occupational therapists, educators, and of course, government service providers. Not on the list would be nurses and professional caregivers. I'd also like to mention as a last point that autism is not a mental health condition that can be rehabilitated out of one person. It is a neurodevelopmental condition, as many of you said, that needs habilitation, possibly for a lifetime. Without this intervention, they may or may not develop mental health issues, but these would be distinct and separate from autism itself. So to mention autism in the same breadth as mental health conditions would be hazing the lines. I'm sure the medical professionals who are in the room today would be better equipped to explain that. But as stakeholders in this topic, the Autism Society Philippines, which has been around since 1989, we are 13,000 members across 100 cities all over the country. We continue to support your efforts in creating this landmark piece of legislation, and we are open and willing to help Congress in finalizing this, and we would be happy to work if, in case, a technical working committee is going to be called for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Velus. We now call Representative from the families of individuals with neurodevelopmental disabilities, Mr. Alejandro Cabason. Mr. Cabason? Mr. Cabason? Okay, we'll get back to you later. We now call on Mr. Denmark Dimopolis from the LED School of Potential Therapy Center.
Abilis? Good morning po sa ating lahat. It's my first time here at Medyo kinakabahan po ako. My name is Denmark Dimopolis. I'm an occupational therapist by profession for almost 21 years, and I own three centers in Cavite. I am very, I am one of the active advocates of about autism in Cavite. Ma'am John Peña sent me here. All right, so I'm representing 500 families with autism. 300 of them from one of my center, and then 150 in another center, and then more than 50 in another center. All right, so I agree, I totally agree with all. All right, so I agree, I totally agree with all the claims this morning about autism. And I am one with you in telling the world that they need help. They need help. All right, so one particular burden is a diagnosis. That's one. In our center, it technically starts there. Although being an occupational therapist, we could start rehabilitating or habilitating the child with ASD even without the diagnosis of the doctor. But there are so many government institutions that are asking parents with autism to have their child clinically diagnosed first. And that in itself is a burden to start up with. Because it's very costly. Not to mention that the schedule is taking like a year or more than a year for them to be to have an appointment with a developmental pediatrician. So that's one. And we all know that for the span of one year continuum. Okay, so in a continuum, meaning it end, it should end in estate planning, since we are all I, I, kanina, somebody said na they will grow. They will also grow. Okay? And many are focused on early intervention. Because we all believe that the earlier ASD is detected and the earlier parents is able to avail therapeutic services. There will be a better prognosis or there will be a better outcome. But yes, that that is true, okay? Pero tama po, lalaki din po sila. No? Patanda din po sila. And many parents are afraid of, san pupunta ang anak nila? San pupunta 'yung, ano po ang mangyayari if they die? So, isang aspeto na kailangan pong mapag-aralan ay ang continuity ng delivery ng programa. Pagpo na diagnose ang bata, ano po ang susunod? They will be availing rehabilitation services, ABA, OT, SLP, physical therapy at some point. Okay, psychologists at some point, they will also be needing specialized individuals para po maharness 'yung kanilang skill, mahanap kung ano 'yung potentials talaga nila. Okay? But we're only addressing the problem in the stakeholder alone. The bigger picture is they move in a community. They are in a community. Nasa loob po sila ng isang komunidad. Isang komunidad na mababa po ang, I have to say this, I'm very sorry, mababa po 'yung kaalaman patungkol sa mga ganitong bagay. Naka-aline 'yung ginagawa ng mga rehabilitation professionals and the parents, pero paglabas po nila ng bahay, wala na pong alignment. Wala na pong alignment. So I also would like to perhaps share that at a community level, there should be education also. Psychoeducation, especially to those people directly in contact with a child diagnosed with ASD. Okay, that's one. Readiness. On the bigger picture again, 'yung subdivision isan na po 'yan sa community nila. Okay, they will go out, even bigger community, they will go to a mall, they will go to a park, they will go to elsewhere. Wherein, again, mababa po 'yung kaalaman. 'Yung continuity ng programa potentially mawawala na naman. Okay, because we all know, part of autism is, is that they cannot integrate sensory information coming from the environment. That, that fast. So, I think napakaganda po ng mga bill na tinatalaki po natin ngayon. Pero mas marami pa po tayong pwede pa ring pagtuunan ng pansin. Okay? School readiness. So, baka po kapusin tayo sa oras. Anyway, pagpo sila nasa school, ang dami po naming complain na natatanggap na 'yung mga tumanggapong eskwelahan sa kanila ay hindi po alam ang gagawin. Okay, so hindi po alam ang gagawin. But because of the inclusive education law, wala po akong data tungkol dito, pero para pong tinanggap nila lahat ng mga bata. Okay? And I also believe that teachers handling children with autism should also be trained. Okay, should also be trained. In addition, lahat po ng mga personals ng mall, personals ng park, hotels, restaurants, and all public establishments should also be trained. So, I'm also pushing for an awareness, not just on the stakeholder alone, not just on the immediate family alone, but also for the community they are into. Yulam po siguro, Chair, for the, for now po ang kaya ko pong ishare po. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Mr. Demopilis. We'd like to acknowledge the physical presence of Honorable Larnie Roque from the Fort Disney Compakidnon. Thank you very much for your presence. We now call on Monsieur Chair, please, Ms. Priscilla Cabason, and then after this, Field Health.
Um, remove my mask. Good morning, everyone. I'm the Secretary of FINE Philippines. FINE is Families of Individuals with Neurodevelopmental Disabilities Philippines. We read through some of the, we read through the bills proposed. And we would just like to give some of our comments. In several bills proposed, there were, they were suggesting a survey. They include a survey of the autism sector. This is well and good to get the data that we need for, to determine what programs can be formulated for them. But since surveys are generally expensive, especially if you're only zeroing in on one particular disability, maybe we, may we suggest that autism be included in the PWD registry form created by DOH and transmitted down to the PDAWS. The PWD registry form is the one used by PDAWS to register persons with disabilities. Autism is not in that list. It is only listed as a cause of disability, which is not true. I mean, autism in itself is a disability, is a recognized disability. And you were just wondering, nandun sa list ang intellectual disability, learning disability. But why not autism or why not ADHD, Down Syndrome, 'yung mga other neurodevelopmental disabilities? So that's one of the things that we are pushing for sa DOH. But so far, we have not been successful. So, so rather than the survey, we would push for inclusion of autism as a disability in the PWD, PWD registry form. Another thing is several bills also mentioned free therapies. Field Health has the Z benefits. There's supposed to be mag-ooffer ng free therapy services to persons with neurodevelopmental disabilities, so not only autism, but the ADHD, psychosocial disabilities, et cetera. But so far, ang pagkaalam ko, there are only four hospitals nationwide that have been accredited for Field Health Z benefits. So it's not really being implemented. Even if sabihin mong may budget ang Field Health for that, but it's not really being implemented. Another thing is adults with autism. There are, there's a rising group of adults with autism who are now being pushing for their rights to be listened to, to regarding their concerns on acceptance, employment, accommodation in tertiary education. So I think when we are creating some bills, propose a creation of Autism Council, maybe we should include an adult or two adults with autism in that council to make sure that we are able to listen to their concerns, to include those concerns in our programs. Another thing is the Inclusive Education Act. As of now, there are still no implementing rules and regulations regarding Inclusive Education Act. This is, I read through the act, and it's very, quite comprehensive. But the DEEPED does not come up with the IRR regarding this. So I think we should really push them to issue that IRR. And then sorry, mayroon po issues. We also would like to recommend for TESTDA to modify some of their courses so that these can be taught to persons with autism and other neurodevelopmental disabilities. Kasi as of now, the courses that they offer are for the neurotypical persons. Pero maybe some courses can be designed such that they can accommodate in difficulties that persons with neurodevelopmental disabilities are facing in skills that they need to learn. Medyo i-modify ng content para makayanan nila 'yung, na matutunan 'yung skills na yon. So that's for TESTDA. And then in the area of employment, it was also mentioned in some of the bills. I agree, kailangan ng reasonable accommodation in terms of their hiring and maybe examination requirements, including in sa civil service. Para more of them can be hired and more of them can be useful members of society, they are earning, they're independent. So that we are also suggesting that this be done. And also for CHED, it is noted that there are very few universities and colleges that offer courses which address the needs of these persons with autism and other neurodevelopmental disabilities. There are only four universities or colleges that offer speech-language therapy. There are only 21 colleges and universities that offer occupational therapy. So given that, say, there are a million persons with autism, how can 21 colleges turn out enough occupational therapists? How can four colleges and universities turn out enough speech-language pathologists to address the needs of these persons with autism? So I think we should, CHED should encourage universities and colleges to offer more programs pertaining to these courses. I think those are some of the things that we would like to suggest to the committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Cabason. We now call on
Monsieur Chair, may I, before you recognize
Okay, Honorable Dasa.
Yeah, thank you, Monsieur Chair. Briefly lang, we appreciate your, your, your inputs, comments, the stakeholders who just presented. I just wanted to share with the committee, in 1995, we passed good legislation that essentially created field, field health. It's a GOCC created by law wherein really the objective was to provide healthcare financing to all Filipinos. And because, as we've heard, these various bills addresses at least a million families in, that have healthcare concerns. So with that note, I wanted to hear from Field Health as to what their plans are in addressing this particular concern.
Thank you, Honorable Dasa. May we now recognize Dr. Mel Sandtilian from the Field Health.
Good morning po, Your Honor, Sir Gato and Sir Dasa. So, magandang umaga po sa inyong lahat. Ang National Health Insurance Program po, nagpapasalamat dahil naibitan po kami dito para mag-share ng aming mga ginagawa patungkol dito sa autism spectrum disorder. So thank you very much po. In 2016, konting kwento lang po ano, in 2016, we have stakeholders such as, I think, the husband of Ms. Priscilla Cabason and other stakeholders going to our office requesting that we develop a benefits package for autism. However, when we develop a policy, it should be inclusive. For example, autism is a disability. So sometime in 2016, we started our staff work developing benefits packages for children with disabilities. And in that regard, we identified four function, four functions affecting children with disabilities, and this is vision, hearing, mobility, and developmental disability. So the disability covering autism spectrum disorder falls under the developmental disabilities. So in 2016, we requested assistance from United Children's Fund. And with that assistance, together with stakeholders such as the Autism Spectrum Society, they were some of our stakeholders that we consulted. And also experts, neurodevelopmental experts, pediatricians. We have a research group, the Alliance for Improving Health Outcomes, and allied medical professionals such as occupational therapists, speech pathologists, and physical therapists. So in 2017, we had a policy for the financing of children with disabilities. So covering these services is an initial assessment, the provision of the services, and the post-assessment. And the professionals involved in the service provisions are the neurodevelopmental pediatricians and the allied health medical professionals such as OT, PT, and speech pathologists. So having said this, we have, as identified by Ms. Cabason, we have the Philippine General Hospital, the Southern Philippines Medical Center, the National Children's Hospital, and the Eastern Visayas Regional Medical Center participating in this program. But as mentioned by Ms. Priscilla Cabason, the implementation is very slow. So the benefits package of Field Health is available, but the problem is the supply side. We have lack of speech pathologists. We have no plantilia position in the government for speech pathologists. In, in this DOH hospitals, in these government hospitals, salary is very low for OT, PT, and speech pathology, so they'd rather go abroad. So we have them in, in the private sector, providing services. But how about for the marginalized sectors who have autism spectrum disorder? How will they avail or access the benefits package if the supply side is lacking? So in terms of financing, it's available, but perhaps we should look at the supply side. How many of our facilities have these professionals who can offer the service for children with autism spectrum disorder? How many in the community understand the needs of these children? As mentioned by Ma'am Priscilla Cabason and Mr. Demopilis, and also the President of the Autism Society of the Philippines, Ms. Velus, this is not a disease. I am also a parent of a child with disability, but not autism. So I, we understand what parents are going through in the house and with the doctor. It's a controlled environment, but when they go to the mall, when, when they watch a movie or go to, uh, a, a park, uh, the, the reaction of people is different because these are different people. So, uh, in terms of health financing, we had the, the benefits package as early as twenty seventeen, but the problem is the access. So, iyon po sir, maraming salamat po.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Santilian, uh, Honorable Dasa.
Mr. Chair, thank you, uh. Uh, may I ask, uh, Dr. Santilian, so, the, it's, there's coverage already. Does that also include the early intervention, you know, occupational therapists, speech therapists, both for government and private, uh, facilities?
Yes, sir. Uh, the, the policy is, uh, there. So, both government and private, any facility that has the capacity to provide the service. So, included in the habilitation services are occupational therapy services, speech pathology services, and physical therapy services, plus the assessment and monitoring of the neurodevelopmental pediatrician or the doctor.
Okay, uh, that is such good news. I, I thank you for that. Uh, um, are, are later on, uh, adult type of intervention also included?
Uh, yes, sir. The coverage, since this is children for developmental disabilities, uh, the coverage is for children up to seventeen years old and three hundred sixty-four days. But for adults, uh, there is no coverage for whatever service they might need. Because these children will grow up to become adults later on. Uh, we have to understand that this is a spectrum. There are highly functional autism. So, if you have watched Rain Man or The Beautiful Mind, Beautiful Mind, we have a professor there who is autistic. In our office, we had an intern who had Asperger's Syndrome, and they're very highly, uh, skilled. So, maybe we have to think not only of children, but also what about when they grow up?
So, Mr. Chair, it's good to know that Phil Health is, uh, has been supportive. And in fact, uh, it's been a few years that they've been covering. And I know that there's a problem on the supply side. So, my question is, is CHED, uh, was CHED, uh, invited? Because I think there would be a very important stakeholder that could address many of the issues on the, uh, lack of, uh, professionals, uh, that can support the concern. Would they be here?
Uh, yes, uh, Honorable Dasa, uh, Mr. Cabildo? Uh, Kabilsaw, sorry. Mr. Kabilsaw of CHED, uh, is here via Zoom. Uh, may we now recognize Mr. Kabilsaw? Mr. John Kabilsaw? Yes, we can see you. Please proceed.
Hey, good morning. Good morning, your honors. Good morning, your honor, Mr. Chair. Uh, I represent CHED for the Technical, uh, Technical Committee on OT, OT Education. OT Education. Currently, there are, uh, the, the, uh, historic, historically, the, the occupational therapy program in the Philippines is, is quite new. Uh, uh, even, uh, even newer is, is the, uh, speech path. Uh, anyway, uh, we, the, it's eighty-six, seventy-six, sixty-seven. The first occupational therapy program in the Philippines was offered by U P, U P Cam. And that is in nineteen sixty-six, sixty-eight only. And it took some time, it took twenty more years, so such that another school in the Philippines offered a second, a, a, a private program. And that's one, that's the one in Laguna. Uh, uh, these, the, uh, rise of, the rise of OT schools in the Philippines came only in the, uh, years two thousand. No, two thousand. Currently, there, as, as was mentioned earlier, there are twenty-one. Actually, there were thirty-six, but then they naturally, naturally died, naturally died. Uh, and most active, most active currently are, most active currently are, are, there are only seven. Seven schools in the Philippines offering that program, occupational, occupational therapy. And from these programs, there are about two hundred or one hundred fifty that are produced yearly after, after two licensure, after two licensure exams. So, that's how, that's how, uh, that's the dearth of, the dearth of, of occupational therapies that we have in the Philippines. And the, from this one hundred, two hundred, one hundred fifty, um, many of them, uh, spent, uh, many of them go to, go outside of the Philippines. They go abroad. They go to the Middle East, the U S, uh, Europe, UK, uh, sing, uh, invasion, invasion countries where, where there are, where remuneration are, remuneration are better than the ones that we have here in the, that the ones that we have here in the Philippines. Uh, not many of those who are registered occupational therapists especially are not in the, not in the government hospitals. Why? Because again of the remunerations. Uh, so, they go to private, uh, to private clinics, the private facilities where the remuneration are better. Uh, so, so, that's the, that's about this, the, uh, status of, uh, status of, of the occupational therapists here in the Philippines. Even fewer are the speech path, speech path group. And so, you will notice that there's a long line, a long line of, of, of these children, of these children with autism waiting for, to be served by, to be served by occupational therapists and/or, uh, uh, speech pathologists. Uh, yes, uh, that's it. They're not, uh, these schools that have been, that have been, uh, uh, that, that were open, that were open. And, and later, they closed their program, and that is because of the low turnout of, low turn, turnout of enrollment in them. For one, they, this school simply go to, this school simply open up a program, open up the program without, without, uh, 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 marketing, without marketing the program. Because it isn't like occupational therapy is, is, isn't, is isn't like physical therapy, nursing, medical technology, or, uh, radiologic technology. That when you ask somebody, when you ask somebody, when you ask somebody, what are you taking up? What program are you taking up? Uh, I am taking up nursing. Nobody asks questions next. I am taking up medical technology. Nobody asks questions next. I am taking up, uh, respiratory therapy. Nobody asks questions next. But when one says, "I am taking up occupational therapy," there is always the second question, "What is that?" What is that? So, kinda, kinda, uh, there, uh, uh, it's the information drive of the, of the school that is required, that, that is lacking in their community, that there is such a thing as occupational, there is such a thing as occupational therapy. I, I am, uh, of, of the, of the, of the proposed laws that have been, that have been, uh, that have been offered, I am, uh, on the, uh, I am, I, uh, let me point out on the insurance by Phil Health. Uh, kasi, public lang siya, no? Public lang siya, and there are only four, there are only four institutions that are, that are offering, that are accepting the Phil Health program. But, but, there are so many of the clients that we-
Please, why not, uh, Mr. Kabilsaw?
That we have, uh, come up to, uh, kulang-kulang, kulang pa din, no? Anyway, uh, iyon, there isn't much of these schools yet offering occupational therapy program.
Thank you. Honorable Dasa, you, you were, you want to ask clarification from CHED? Uh, no way. Okay, uh, Honorable Adyong?
Thank you, uh, very much, Mr. Chair. Um, first of all, I'd like to commend, uh, Mr. Dimapillis, no? For staying on course. Uh, you know, it's hard really to, it's hard really to make an appointment with occupational therapist. In my case, our daughter, we have to wait for three months or six months, even, even more, just to get that thirty-minute, no? Uh, appointment with the occupational therapist. It's really hard. Now, I understand, uh, session of, ano, uh, Ms. Santilian, that she mentions about the supply side of it, no? The autism spectrum, indicate, those who are diagnosed, no? Among children aged below ten years old is fast-growing, Mr. Chair. It's, it's really alarming. And if we don't, uh, focus on this and address this issue, it would create a crisis, no? Imagine if we have portion, substantial portion of our population inheriting this society, no? Ang kabataan ng ating kinabukasan. Imagine if this continues to grow, what country are we going to see in the future if we cannot support these children, no? That's why, Mr. Chair, I'm, want to ask, uh, I, I know who to go first, no? CHED or Phil Health? Because we all, all understand there's a lack of support. We are here because we know, although there's already the program for, uh, by, uh, Phil Health, uh, but they're still lacking in terms of support, no? Not only from the government, but even the private. We understand that in our community, there's a low educate awareness of how to deal with autism. Mr., that's our delivered reality, Mr. Chair, as a parent with a child diagnosed with autism spectrum. I, I admit, Mr. Chair, I'm having problem on how to deal with my child. Uh, I don't know how to communicate with her. Uh, it's, it's both ways. If she could not understand me, I could not understand her. It's also a fact that I need to be, perhaps to be trained as well by occupational therapists, not only my child, to undergo these, uh, processes. So, there's so many rays and so many areas that we lack, no? That's why we need to really push on the discussion of, and not only the awareness, but how to support both the private and the government, no? Uh, so, I'm just, would like to know exactly from, perhaps I would start, Mr. Chair, with, uh, uh, with, uh, CHED, no? Kasi, in terms of the, the speech pathologies, all the courses that are offered, marami po sa mga kaya nga nagpapasalamat po ako, Mr. Chair, kay Mr. Dimapillis, because she, she preferred to stay in her, in his community. Ang problema po, the reason why, uh, there's a, seems to be a lack of, uh, uh, doctors with this, uh, specific discipline, you know, specializing, uh, providing services for, healthcare services for children with, uh, autism spectrum. It's because they move out of the country because of, you know, lack of support from the government. They tend to, you know, they tend to seek greener pasture abroad. Diba? Yun ang problema, ma'am LaRene, diba? That's why we have a very, very minimal number of occupational therapists. In our case, nagkaka-problema kami. So, imagine, Mr. Chair, waiting for three months. You don't know how to deal with your child for three months, for your child, no? Your child. So, I'd just like to ask, on terms of the supply, because that's where I think the problem is, no? On the, sinabi po ni Ms. Santilian, supply in terms of government services, supply in terms of the number of actual occupational therapists, speech pathologists, and supply in terms of, uh, giving avenue for those who may be come future pathological, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, occupational therapist in providing them, then the, you know, making these courses and this for their future profession attractive to stay on course and stay in the country. So, I would like to start, Mr. Chair, with, uh, CHED. Kanina po, uh, sinabi po niya, historically, this is something new. Uh, I, I'd like to ask, CHED po, kasi twenty-one, I, I, I think, uh, Ms. Cabason mentioned that only twenty-one, no? Twenty-one schools in the country that offers, no, uh, these courses, no? Yung occupational therapies. I'd like to ask for the CHED. What do you think, uh, or how can we provide a more, ano, how can we strengthen po the courses, the program? For example, is it because, uh, we don't have, the CHED has no, uh, what you call this? CHED has no, let's say, wala hong tayong programa masyado o wala hong tayong mandato para to make these courses offered in some, in, in making schools or, uh, offer these courses, no? Uh, pas manamihin, ano po yung, ano po yung nakikita natin problema sa, sa CHED, no? Kasi gusto po na talaga natin magkaroon ng mas marami pa pong, uh, gagraduate at magiging future na mga occupational therapists, speech pathologists, uh, to meet the growing population of children who would soon become adult diagnosed with autism spectrum. Mr. Chair, uh, gusto ko po malaman yun ka from the CHED?
Uh, Mr. Kabilsaw, a brief answer?
Hello po. Uh, I think, I think, uh, CHED should, uh, put occupational therapy in the priority list of scholarships. Because as of now, as currently, occupational therapy is not in the list of priorities. Med tech, pharmacy, nursing, nursing, uh, respiratory therapy. Nandun sila, nandun sila lahat sa priority. So, people can, can avail scholarships on this program, not in occupational therapy.
Thank you. Uh, it is a bit, it's, it's, Mr. Chair, may I can?
Follow-up question?
Yeah, follow-up question. Currently po, Mr. Chair, ano po yung programa ng CHED na dealing with, uh, uh, courses that has something to do with neurodevelopmental disabilities? Meron po ba kayong currently na programa na ganyan or na, sa, under the CHED?
None, none so far. None so far, kasi these are, these are school-
Meaning courses po, meaning courses or program that deals with specific discipline? For example, neurodevelopmental, uh, ano?
Incorporated na siya dun sa, incorporated siya dun sa occupational therapy. Incorporated siya dun sa speech pathology. Incorporated siya dun sa physical therapy.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for the clarification. Thank you, CHED.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Adyong. We will, uh, let the resource person, uh, speak first and then the members will now, uh, can now interpolate. So, we now listen to, uh, Yusek Angelo Tapales of the Child Council for Wel-, for the Welfare of Children. Uh, Ms. Yusek Tapales?
Uh, good morning, uh, Mr. Chair, honorable members of the committee, distinguished resource persons. I am Under Secretary Angelo Tapales from the Council for the Welfare of Children. We are an attached agency of the DSWD. We were created under Presidential Decree Number Six Oh Three. Uh, we are mandate, we are the focal interagency body about children. So, needless to say, uh, Mr. Chair, honorable members of the committee, this, uh, the pending bills are landmark and monumental bills. And the Council for the Welfare of Children wholeheartedly supports any substituted consolidation version that the committee will churn out. Because, uh, needless to say, these pending bills and eventual legislation is a, uh, is a- is a ma, uh, is a manifestation of our commitment to the United Nations Convention of the Rights of Cha, of the Child, Uni, Universal Declaration of Human Rights, United Nations Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, among others. Um, madam, uh, Mr. Chair and Honorable Members of the Committee, based on the, uh, data from the Philippine Statistics Authority, there is an estimated five point one million children with disabilities in the Philippines. And this represents for about fourteen percent of our total child population. Based on the World Population Review, the Philippines has a notation rate of eighty-one point eight percent uh, per ten thousand people. So this is about one in, uh, one hundred twenty-two persons in the Philippines. In two thousand eighteen, there was a study conducted by the Department of Health and they found out that only ten percent of children with ASD in the Philippines had received diagnosis. This means that there are an estimated one million children with ASD in the Philippines who are not receiving any support. That's why we, we feel the, uh, sponsorship speeches of the honorable sponsors and of course, uh, the sentiments of the resource persons. We fully support this and, uh, we have the following, we, we want to, uh, advance, uh, or profound or suggest, uh, the following revisions with, with respect, of course, to the members of the committee. Number one is the definition of aut, uh, autism. Uh, in the, in the proposed bills, uh, Honorable Chair, there are many definitions or various definitions or vary definitions of autism. The Council for the Welfare of Children suggests the definition in the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders be adopted. And perhaps the wording in House Bill Seventy-eight ninety-two of Honorable Magcino and House Bill Six-six, uh, Eight-six of Honorable Yap Tulfo Surianno and Duterte, uh, with the Colatilia as defined in the latest version of the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders. This is to give flexibility for future inclusions in the definition of, in the manual, uh, Honorable Chair, so that, uh, any future amendments in that definition will be automatically covered by this proposed legislation. Uh, Mr. Chair?
May I interject?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
You were proposing that the diagnosis be based on the DSM under mental condition? So are you implying that it is?
The definition, the definition, Mr. Chair, the definition, because.
Yeah, but you said under the mental disorder. So is it a mental disorder?
This is a manual, Mr. Chair.
So it's not, it does not necessarily mean it's a mental disorder, but it's under the mental disorder.
Under the manual. This is the manual used by psychologists and psychiatrists, uh, Mr. Chair.
Because when you say it's under mental disorder, but it's not a mental disorder, so how can it be under the mental disorder, uh, classification?
Mr. Chair, we are just referring to the manual for uniformity. Anyway, this is just a suggestion, uh, because, uh, this is the manual used by psychologists, uh, Mr. Chair and, uh, perhaps other medical experts, Mr. Chair. Uh, the, the point of the Council for the Welfare of Children is to leave flexibility in the definition so that any, uh, future definition of autism or autism, uh, uh, spectrum disorder will be automatically, will automatically benefit from the provisions of this landmark legislation. Um, another, uh, suggestion, Mr. Chair, is, uh, on the provision providing continuing education and training of health personnel and service providers. We understand that, of course, the community has to be involved and the families should also be trained. That's why the Council for the Welfare of, uh, of Children is suggesting that the, that service provider, the term service provider, be defined in the definition of terms to include any person or entity that provides service to the public so as to include businesses, government agencies, and nonprofit, uh, organizations, Mr. Chair. This way, employees and personnel of the private sector and even CSOs, civil society organizations, who interact or provide services with, uh, persons with disabilities will be included. And this expanded definition will also, uh, cover teaching and non-teaching personnel of child development centers, special education schools, and inclusive learning resource centers. And in addition to this definition, Mr. Chair, perhaps a provision also mandating the cascading of knowledge to the community, whether through the LGUs or other structures already existing. And of course, the, uh, the, uh, uh, awareness campaign and training also of the families dealing with, uh, children with, uh, uh, with autism and ASD. Uh, Mr. Chair, on Section Eight, uh, pertaining to early detection of intervention of autism, uh, this is, uh, from House Bill Two-Two-Nine, among others. The CWC supports this, uh, provision, but we respectfully suggest the inclusion or the possible inclusion of the Early Childhood Care Development Council as one of the responsible agencies. The ECCD was created under RA One-O-Four Ten or the Early Years Act of two thousand eighteen. They are the primary government agency supporting the government's ECCD programs like, uh, dealing with health, nutrition, early education, and social services of children from zero to four years old. So we respectfully suggest that they be top also in this early detection and intervention of autism provision. Uh, on the provision, uh, providing protection in cases of disaster and emergencies, uh, Honorable Chair, uh, found in House Bills Two-Two-Nine, Three-Nine Seven-Nine, and Seven-Eight Nine-Two, we support this, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Chair, but we respectfully suggest that the definition of, uh, disasters and emergencies also covers situations of armed conflict because children with disabilities are particularly vulnerable in this situation. We invite the Honorable, uh, Committee's attention to Republic Act Number One-One-Eight, One-One-One Eight-Eight or the Special Protection of Children in Situations of Armed Conflict. Um, we also invite the, uh, the Committee's attention to Republic Act One-O-A Two-One, otherwise known as the Child Emergency Relief and Protection Act, particularly the Comprehensive Emergency Program for Children found in that law uh, as a guide for these provisions. Because, uh, for the Council for the Welfare of Children, uh, Honorable Members of the Committee, Mr. Chair, this is a monumental and landmark bill and future law. So, it's, I, I, we suggest that it be harmonized with, uh, laws already existing so as to broaden its reach and to make it more comprehensible and in harmony with the other existing laws. Uh, Mr. Chair, on the confidentiality of medical information for persons with, uh, with autism, uh, found in, uh, House Bill Number Three-Nine Seven-Nine, we support this provision, but we respectfully suggest the inclusion of the National Privacy Commission on top of the DOJ and the DOH because they handle the, these kinds of matters, Mr. Chair. Uh, other than that, Mr. Chair, uh, we don't have any comments, but we undertake to submit a more comprehensive position paper at the soonest possible time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, uh, Yusek, uh, Tapales, for your, uh, comprehensive, uh, presentation. Yes, Honorable Dasa.
Yeah, uh, thank you so, so much for that, Yusek. Um, what, for, for you or the other stakeholders, um, my understanding, many HMOs, health maintenance organizations exclude, uh, you know, this, um, neurology, you know, neuro type of disorders. They're excluded and in fact, even if it's covered, they exclude children when they reach twenty-one. Uh, but this same house passed a law that in the past, HIV, for example, wasn't included in the HMO coverage. We included that by law. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, Ma, Mr. Chair, Honorable Member of the Committee, Honorable Dasa, at the Council for the Welfare of Children, we support anything that would be, that would favor children. In fact, the provisions in the, in the, um, proposed, uh, legislation about mandatory Phil Health inclusion, non-discrimination with respect to insurance coverage, we fully support that. So if this, uh, autism and ASD will be included also and, uh, and the interventions that, uh, they need, we, we fully support that, uh, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you for that, Mr. Chair. Uh, may I ask the stakeholders, um, to include maybe the topic on HMOs? Because my understanding is many HMOs exclude coverage and I don't think that should be the case. And we might as well address that, uh, if it's not, if there's no provision that addresses that. If Phil Health's covering it, then I think the private sector HMOs should, should also do their share.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Dasa.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Tupas.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, it is really crystal clear to all of us that these bills on, uh, comprehensive autism care plan are indeed so important. I wish to be, I wish to manifest, Mr. Chair, my support and considering the significance and importance of these bills, upon probably after consolidation, uh, may I move, Mr. Chair, that all members present right now be included as, uh, authors of the consolidated bill?
Second, there, there being no objection, the motion of Honorable Tupas, uh, is, uh, approved. Uh, we now listen to.
Yes, sir.
Um, sino yun si?
Department of Health.
Sino?
Manuel Villis.
Um, uh, Mr. Manuel Valiesteros from the Department of Health.
Before you proceed, uh, we'd like to acknowledge the physical presence of Honorable Ricardo Cruz Junior of the, uh, First District of Taguig-Pateros and, uh, Honorable Iolochio Rodriguez of the Long District of Catanduanes. Uh, thank you very much for your presence.
Sir Director, Director Gerard Bellima.
Uh, Director Gerard Bellima of the Department of Health is now recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, um, OIC Director Gerard Bellima from the Disease Prevention and Control Bureau. And thank you for this opportunity to be involved in the, uh, discussion on autism. Uh, the Department of Health acknowledges the noble intention of the above-mentioned House Bills aiming to institutionalize a comprehensive, um, autism care plan. In the DOH Administrative Order on the Philippine Registry for Persons with Disabilities, autism is identified as one of the causes of disability. However, there is still a need to specify what type of disability the person has based on the types of disabilities mentioned such as learning, intellectual, psychosocial, mental, visual, hard of hearing, speech impairment, and physical disability. The, the Department of Health would like to raise the following points for consideration to ensure that the proposed initiatives for autism are aligned with the current healthcare, uh, system reforms, no? First, on the creation of an autism center. The DOH supports the intention of this particular provision on the creation of an autism center. However, in the context of current policies and strategic directions of the department, we recommend that specialized autism care services be lodged within the brain and spine care centers under neurological disorders for evaluation and management and rehabilitation centers for physical, speech, behavioral, and occupational therapy, especially those with apparent disabilities or those with multiple disabilities. We also recommend to have a separate area in the management of adults and children with autism. According to our DOH Department Order issued in two thousand twenty-one, autism classified under neurodevelopmental disorders can be evaluated and managed in Level Three Hospitals for brain and spine care and physical and rehabilitation medicine, while screening for neurodevelopmental disorders can be provided at the primary care level and Level One and Level Two Hospitals. The Dr. Jose Reyes Memorial Medical Center is already designated as the National Specialty Care Center for Brain and Spine Care. And on the other hand, the National Specialty Care Center for Rehab Medicine is the Philippine Orthopedic Center. The Department of Health emphasizes that the management of autism should be viewed in a systems perspective. Children or even adults with autism do not just need health services such as rehabilitation services, but due to chronicity of autism, it is important that we build relationships with special education schools that are accessible and affordable to people with, uh, autism. Rehabilitation per se is important, but living a near-normal life and activities of daily living that includes access to school, this will promote socialization, which is a constant challenge of, um, people with ASD. On the creation of a separate program, the current direction of the DOH is to shift from a programmatic approach to the life stages approach. Thus, the DOH recommends integrating the various aspects of screening, evaluation, and management into primary care and the healthcare provider networks to ensure access to appropriate interventions rather than taking a program approach. This is consistent with the mandates of the Universal Healthcare Act, namely, an integrated and comprehensive approach to ensure that all Filipinos are health-literate, provided with healthy living conditions, and protected from hazards and risks that can affect their health. On the treatment of person with autism as person with disability, person with autism can already avail of services for persons with disabilities by applying for a PWD identification card. Hence, persons with autism are encouraged to apply for a PWD card provided that they can submit the required documents in order to be recognized and receive, receive the services provided, uh, for persons with disabilities. Relative to these points, the Department of Health respectfully recommends that the screening, evaluation, and management of autism be incorporated within the integrated service delivery of healthcare provider networks or HCPN and in schools as part of the individual, individual-based services that we are offering to all Filipino citizens. Mr. Chair, uh, we shall submit, uh, respectfully submit this, um, position in the committee as soon as we get the necessary clearances within the department. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you very much, uh, uh, from the TESDA, uh, Ms. Gemma Suriaga. Uh, TESDA, um, if she's not around, we will now call on Ms. Irene Dumla from the DSWD. Ms. Dumla? If she's not around, we call on Dr. Christine Abari from the Philippine Council for Mental Health. Um, Ms. Dumla? From DS, DS Double, DSWD? You're now recognized?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed.
Yeah, so the Honorable Chairperson, the Honorable Members of the Committee, um, distinguished guests, again, good morning to each and everyone. Foremost, we would like to express our appreciation to the committee for inviting the Department of Social Welfare and Development and be a resource person in this very significant discussion. May we mention that the DSWD, as the lead in social protection, promotes the rights and the welfare of the vulnerable and the disadvantaged individuals and families. As early as two thousand eighteen, the department has manifested our support for bills in both houses of the same intent that were earlier filed. And the DSWD has been, uh, consistently supporting these legislative measures that, uh, provide quality health and education accessible to, uh, persons with disabilities. Um, this is true to its mandate and commitment to providing social services anchored on the principles of social protection, which are rights-based, inclusive, and transformative. Uh, in addition, uh, the DSWD respectfully informs this committee that it operates and manages centers and residential care facilities that cater to the needs of persons with disabilities, including neurological dis- that cater to the needs of persons with disabilities, including neurological disa- uh, developmental disabilities. These are at, um, Elsie Gatch's Village in Field Office, um, 4A. We also have Amor Village in Field Office 3 and the, um, Angels Haven in Field Office 11. However, we recognize that there's more that we can do to protect, uh, persons with autism and of course promote their participation and development. That is why the DSWD welcomes the opportunity to work with other stakeholders. Uh, we actually have reviewed the proposed bills. We have our comments and recommendations, which we intend to submit officially to the committee. But may we advance our suggestion to always include the DSWD, the National Council for Disability Affairs, which is being chaired, uh, by the DSWD and the Council for the Welfare of Children. Uh, both agencies are actually attached to the department and, um, both, uh, formulates, um, and policies and protocols to ensure, uh, that, uh, we are able to address all the concerns of this particular sectors. And, um, uh, again, we would like to mention that the DSWD is the chairperson of the NCDAs, which is mandated to formulate policies and coordinate the activities of all agencies uh, concerning disability issues and, uh, concerns. Meanwhile, the CWC, as earlier articulated by, uh, our undersecretary, is mandated to coordinate and implement and enforce laws, formulate, monitor, and evaluate, um, children's policies, programs, and measures. And as mentioned earlier, it chairs the Subcommittee on Children with Disabilities and the Early Childhood Care and Development Council. Again, both agencies are attached to the DSWD. Um, as I've earlier mentioned, we have more comments and recommendations. It will be contained in the official paper of the department that will be submitted to the committee soon as it is signed by our principals. And of course, uh, Mr. Chair, we would like to mention that we yield to the inputs of the experts on this subject matter. So that is it for the DSWD for this morning. Again, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Dumla. Uh, please submit your, uh, official position paper to this committee, uh, in a month's time. Ms. Dumla.
Affirmative on that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Linda Andrade from the, from TESDA, you're now recognized. Please unmute.
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. And good morning po sa lahat ng naririto ngayon and of course, uh, to the members of the committee. As for the agency po, we would like, uh, we we would like to inform you, um, that we are adhering po on the uh, equal opportunity principle. So with that, uh, we don't, uh, condone any, um, uh, discrimination po as to, uh, the provision and the, the, the delivery of training to, uh, on the basis of, uh, uh, gender, sex, orientation, civil status, or, uh, disability, religion, ethnicity, ethnicity, or, uh, political affiliation po. Uh, on, on, on Section 5 of, uh, of the bills and, uh, on the other bills po regarding the, uh, undergoing mandatory continuing education, the agency does, uh, interpose no, uh, no objection for, po on this, uh, uh, provision, Mr. Chair. Uh, we welcome this po, uh, also for, uh, the continuing, uh, upskilling of our tr- uh, training facilitators and our trainers in order to serve, uh, rightfully serve and appropriately serve, uh, those, uh, persons, um, with neuro, uh, uh, development, uh, disorders. And likewise, Mr. Chair, uh, the agency has developed, uh, namang po in recognition uh, of, uh, those with autism, we do have a training regulation on caregiving, which gives, um, uh, which specializes, uh, on the special needs of, uh, of our clients po. So we have, uh, training, existing training regulations for this. Uh, Mr. Chair, we will, uh, submit our official, uh, position on this po once it was signed by our principals. That would be all, Mr. Chair, and good morning again.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Uh, Andrade. Uh, from the Philippine Council for Mental Health, Dr. Christine Elaine Abari. Dr. Abari. Dr. Abari.
Good mo- good morning.
Yes, please proceed.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and to our honorable representatives and distinguished guests. On behalf of our Medical Center Chief, Dr. Noel Reyes, I am Dr. Christine Elaine Abari, a medical specialist and child and child psychiatrist from the National Center for Mental Health. And while NCMH po has been on the front line in delivering preventive, curative, and rehabilitative mental health service in our country, with the passage of Mental Health Act, we are also mandated to provide a comprehensive services to neurodevelopmental disorders and even neurologic conditions. And we are honored today to be a part of this historical landmark. Current Treatments for Autism Spectrum Disorder aims to alleviate symptoms that impair daily functioning and quality of life. As mentioned po earlier, ASD affects not only infants, not only children, but also adolescents and adults differently, which means that individuals with ASD have a unique strength and difficulties that requires individualized treatment. Therefore, interventions in a timely manner should be evidence-based, comprehensive, that integrates all potential services from clinical and non-clinical, a collaborative framework with multidisciplinary team of medical providers, allied health professionals, and behavioral health therapists tailored to the individuals with ASD for the best possible outcomes. Mr. Chair, bills institutionalizing a comprehensive autism care plan in our country will be groundbreaking because it will only, it will also enhance the quality and accessibility of care and services and improve the management that addresses the needs of persons diagnosed with ASD, especially those who live below the poverty line. In my professional and personal opinion, Mr. Chair, to our honorable authors of the bills, I would like to raise the following points to be considered. First is a treatment-delivery system that will provide a comprehensive services and with that, a one-stop shop for the individual with ASD and their families from the least resource-intensive service to more intensive or specialist-delivered treatments. Points to consider also is to have an integrated plan within a defined care pathway, not only focusing on the diagnosis, but also for continuative interventions and periodic redefinition of care for individuals with autism. As care for individuals requires multiple sectors and requires services focusing on various stages of life. As mentioned earlier, there is a gap particularly with individuals' transition from adolescent to adult to adulthood. In addition, care pathway should also include inpatient settings. And I, I agree with Ms. Magnovelus that while we focus on rehabilitative, individuals with ASD, um, who display disruptive behaviors are actually admitted to our psychiatric facilities or hospitals. And with this, we also need to improve care in general psychiatric unit through staff training and autism-specific intervention strategies. And lastly, assessment and treatment should also include for those individuals with ASD with co-occurring comorbid conditions such as ADHD, intellectual disability, other neurologic disorders such as seizure, medical disorders as well, and psychiatric conditions because ASD are also known to be at risk of developing other psychiatric disorders like depression and anxiety. And because of the complexities, you know, they will complicate the diagnosis as well as the treatment and management. So, Mr. Chair, a comprehensive plan really entails a whole society approach, and we are honored to be a part of this. From the national to community-level involvement, along with primary care services, specialized healthcare services, public health, social protection and education all should be on the front line in addressing, um, individuals with autism spectrum disorder such that legislation and bills that promotes the inclusion of individual with ASD not only in our healthcare system but also in our community will help these individuals reach their maximum potential. That will be all for us, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Abari. Um, we now, uh, uh, the ta- the the committee is now open for interpretation. Uh. Can we have, uh, Congressman Jane Castro? Honorable Jane Castro, uh. You're now recognized. Honorable Castro. If not, we can go to Honorable Mar- Marisa Delmar.
Hello, yes, sir. Good morning. This is Kong Jane Castro.
I, okay, uh, Honorable Castro, you're now recognized.
I had the problem there, uh, unmuting, okay? So, uh, good morning, Mr. Chair, good morning, everyone, and to the resource speakers. I, I think since, uh, we're talk- we're talking about the interventions here, uh, uh, of the ASD's, uh, learning, psychosocial, emotional aspects of them. I agree with the resource person who has earlier gave her opinion that the DEEPED, this is just my opinion, that the DEEPED can greatly help children with, uh, ASD or, uh, with, uh, autism spectrum disorder. How? Because there's a school, uh, program, progressive learning education system which caters or also to neurodiverse students or those with autism or those with dyslexia. This, because, uh, I mean, this school is really new, no? It's not traditional. It's not the usual, uh, four piece. It's not the, the, the SWD program. Uh, but in Hiligayon, it's kungko pamati pama-hao and pauli, meaning you sit down, you listen, you eat your snacks, and then you go home. But, uh, this is, uh, non-traditional, this, in the sense that, uh, the DEEPED has not recognized this. That they have, uh, the, the Department of Education does not even bother to look into how this progressive learning education system has helped uh, a lot of neurodiverse students, no? Because in the progressive learning education system, the neurodiverse children are enrolled together with the neurotypical students or the regular ones, and they grow up useful, productive, or they live a mere normal life because they're able to interact with the students. Um, they are able to invite their manner reasons, and they get to learn new vocabularies every day. And, um, um, they get this 265 days or the regular, uh, school days, no? And, uh, the, the, the school has its tried, I, I guess, it's a school-based, it's home-based, and, uh, community-based. Uh, the program is, uh, uh, the success of this program is, of course, in collaboration with the parents. And also, it's community-based because the children are hands-on with their gross and, uh, fine motor, uh, activities. Uh, they introduce the, with the current issues like that. And, um, um, and, uh, let's not forget that man is a social being. We can recite a lot of, uh, republic acts here and presidential decrees, but what is important is, is that they will learn, these children will learn to interact uh, with the regular students or the regular children, and, uh, they can, um, adopt, no, uh, whatever they, uh, get or hear from them. Because, eh, after all, education is a continuous lifelong process. You just don't get it, uh, 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 the maximum benefit. You don't get it three times from a speech service. This is hard to come by. So, that's all, um, uh, Mr. Chair. That's my sharing.
Thank you very much, Honorable Castro. Um, may me hear, uh, uh, comment from the Department of Education, Ms. Rhea Sereno. Ms. Sereno. Wala. Okay, uh. Integrate response. So, did Ms. Sereno is, uh, not around? We now call on Honorable Marisa Delmar Magcino. Honorable Magcino. Yes, uh, you're now recognized, Honorable Magcino.
So. How, do you hear me?
Yes, uh, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, do we have any representative from the National Council for Disability Affairs or NCDAs?
Uh, they were invited, but unfortunately, um, uh, they did not come.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so I have to move on to my next question without the NCDAs. Uh, for the autism stigma, can, uh, reduce well-being as well as increase the presence of camouflaging behaviors persons with autism which mask autistic traits? What interventions do we have to counteract the stereotyping stigma against persons with autism? For example, such as positive media representation? Anybody po, Mr. Chair, from our resource person?
Uh, anyone who would like to answer the, uh, query of, uh, Honorable Magcino? Uh, from the Department of Health or Usektapalis? Yes, the stigma, how to counter the stigma?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, at the Council for the Welfare of Children, uh, we make sure that, uh, national policies are implemented at the sub-national level. Excuse me. So if this bill will become law, the role of the, of course, uh, the Council for the Welfare of Children and other agencies, especially the DSWD, is to ensure that, uh, the, 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 the provisions of this law will be implemented. What we do at the Council for the Welfare of Children, Mr. Chair and Honorable Magcino, is that we provide technical assistance and capacity building to LGUs. Maybe, down the road, uh, indicators pertaining to autism and autism, uh, spectrum disorder or programs about them can be included perhaps in the annual and mandatory audit of the DILG, the Child Friendly Local Governance Audit, which is, uh, being conducted every, every every year by the, headed by the DILG. If we include this as an indicator, programs, uh, uh, capacity building, uh, activities, uh, public awareness, of course, uh, campaigns about, uh, discrimination and, uh, the stigma, uh, uh, we can, we can, ano, no, we can cascade it to the LGUs and, uh, perhaps at least nationally, we can expect at least a minimum compliance from the LGUs because this is an annual and mandatory, uh, uh, audit. Another route, aside from the CFLGA audit, uh, being conducted amongst the LGUs, is, uh, perhaps the Council for the Welfare of Children and other agencies can, especially the DILG, can also, uh, include, uh, programs, project, and, and activities pertaining or related to this law in the strengthening of the local councils for the protection of children, which is a structure from the provincial, city, and municipality up to the barangay level to create awareness and really to fight discrimination and this, uh, stigma being ascribed to children and even adults with autism and autism spectrum disorder. Madam Chair, uh, um, Mr. Chair, Madam, Honorable Member of the Committee, thank you.
Honorable Magcino.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's, uh, very well said. For another question, please, Mr. Chair. To a medical expert on autism, autism is a genetically predisposed illness. Are there hopes of a treatment or prevention of autism using technologies on genetic DNA manipulation, Mr. Chair?
Uh. Anyone who would like to answer? Is it Jenny, my genetic predisposition down? Uh, is there a way to prevent? Because I think that was the question.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So, anyone who would like to, from the Department of Health, maybe?
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, um.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like to defer that question to our specialists on, on, on developmental, um, pediatrics, Paul, Mr. Chair. But in the Department of Health, we develop standards of care through a professional society, uh, mid, uh, developed clinical practice guidelines. And, um, we are able to, um, get, um, scientific advice from the professional societies for specific topics. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Honorable.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, so we will be asking our medical expert if there is a genetic DNA manipulation, if it can be, uh, submitted to our committee. And, uh, that is, uh, very helpful for all of us, especially for the families who have this, uh, autism family member. And may we get the comments from our resource on my proposal that persons with autism be deemed as PWDs to make them entitled to all benefits granted to PWDs under the existing laws, Mr. Chair?
Thank you very much, Honorable Magcino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May we have the sentiment of the resource, of our, uh, resource people and our, uh, persons with autism if this will be entitled as PWDs to be granted the benefits under the existing laws?
Yusekta Palace?
Honorable Chair, Honorable Member Magcino, the Council for the Welfare of Children agrees with the provision to include, uh, persons with autism and ASD as in the definition of PWDs, persons with disabilities. They don't want to be called PWDs in the international level, so we call them persons with disabilities. So because, uh, the benefits attributed to persons with disabilities will automatically redound to children with autism and ASD. Thank you, Madam, Mr. Chair and Madam Member of the Committee.
Thank you, uh.
Mr. Chair, this is Mona Magnavilus. May I request, uh, to be recognized?
We will, uh, finish first, Honorable Magcino.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, uh, I am, um, satisfied with the answer, Mr. Chair, because the entitlement is very important to us. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Magcino. Uh, uh, from the Autism Society of the Philippines, Ms. Velus?
Thank you so much, sir, for acknowledging. So, uh, with regards to the points of Ms., uh, of, of, of Representative Magcino, uh, we are already currently availing or enjoying the benefits of persons with disabilities, our children and our family members are. I would also like to address her point about, uh, genetic manipulation. While we, as, uh, as, as an organization, the Autism Society Philippines, would like our family members to live the best versions of themselves, we still strongly are against looking at autism from a medical perspective alone. We have a young man in the room readily caught saying that it is not up, it is not, we, we should not look at autism as an illness that has to be cured and that has to be wiped out because, because it is a critical part of who they are. So our, our position is to look at autism from a social perspective, where we are looking at protection, participation, development. We should encourage, in the, in the word of the law, their acceptance, accommodation, and appreciation rather than wiping out the condition altogether. I think it is up to us to make sure they live the best versions of their lives, but to look at it as something that has to be eradicated, it may breach, uh, a certain ethical, uh, an ethical line. That is my position, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Velus. So, Honorable Roque?
Mr. Chair, clarif- clarification lang from Yusek Tapalas. Um, Yusek, uh, earlier, uh, since you are from the Welfare Children's Council for the Welfare of Children, may I know if, um, persons with autism, regardless of age, fall under the children of your council? As we all know, he, persons or children, definitely most of the children with autism, regardless of age, even if they reach all the way to fifty, their mental capacity, their social ability will still remain as a child. Will they fall under regardless of age in your council? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Roque, uh, Yusek Tapalas.
Mr. Chair, Honorable Member of the Committee, all children are within the mandate of the Council for the Welfare of Children. We share the responsibility for children with disabilities with the National Council for Disability Affairs. Uh, in fact, uh, currently, we are preparing the Philippine government's response to the UN Commission on the Rights of Persons with Disability, Disabilities. We will be submitting it by October, and hopefully next year, we will have a constructive dialogue with the UN Committee. As for your question, uh, pertaining to those, uh, not, uh, uh, exceeding the, the age of eighteen, the common definition now, Madam Chair, of children is not just persons below eighteen, but even those above eighteen, but, uh, if they cannot protect and take care of themselves due to some physical or mental disability or condition. So I think as early as Republic Act seventy-six ten, this has been the definition. And in every proposed bill about children, uh, concerning children, in fact, I attended, uh, uh, another he- hearing now about internet safety and sexual violence. We are promoting this definition so as to include those who may have, uh, uh, exceeded the age of eighteen, but of course, for, for some physical or mental condition or, or disability, they cannot take care, fully take care for themselves. So it's still covered by the Council for the Welfare of Children. In fact, we have a subcommittee on children, uh, with disabilities, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Honorable Member of the Committee.
So your answer is yes?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Uh, autism spectrum. Uh, is still covered by your.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, for the clarification, Yusek Tapalas.
Sir Chair.
Yes, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Adyong?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm just trying to understand, no, digest, uh, the responses coming from our stakeholders. And, uh, I, I, no, I'd like to apologize for my, uh, for my ignorance in the matter. But I just like to know exactly, and I want to get the reaction or the response from the Philippine Autism Cent, uh, Society. Because we've been hearing, uh, words like disorder, disability, interchangeably, uh, used as if these are not mutually exclusive. So I know there's a thin hair, the split hair definition between the two, uh, terms, no? But if we try to dissect that, I think for me, in my, in, as I understand it, uh, it's not, it's not a disorder, correct me if I'm wrong. Because if it's a disorder, it should, um, the, the way to address the problem is probably, uh, through medical approaches. If it's a disorder, you need pills for that. If you have like, uh, uh, if you're bipolar, then you, it's a disorder, and you have to take, probably you'll have to, your doctor would have to give you some pills for you to, I know, uh, to ease, uh, the, the problem. But if it's an inability, I think that's where social support comes in. And I understand the position of the Philippine Autism. So I would like to under, I would like Mr. Chair to be clarified. I think this is also shared, this concern of mine is also shared by the Chair, no? Do we have a common understanding on how to use the terms disorder? How to apply that? Because that would guide our determination and operation in addressing the gaps, uh, to really fully, uh, support our, the, you know, the, our children diagnosed with autism. So I'd like to ask, uh, the, uh, you know, the position on the Philippine Autism Society. Uh, ma'am?
Uh, is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. For me, I would, you know, pardon my, my ignorance on this, um, uh, ma'am, but, uh, I would prefer to the, the term be used as a disability rather than disorder because I understand your position that social support should come and should actually be the one, the tool, to address the gaps that our, that those who have been diagnosed with autism really need in ten, in, instead of using disorder because that would fall under mental, uh, you know, mental health condition or problem, which I don't agree. And I certainly do not agree that it is genetically, uh, you know, could be genetically, uh, I don't know, passed on, no? Because, uh, it has no, wala pa eh, it's a phenomenon, you know? But this is, there's a known, not known cause for autism, no? So I would like to get, uh, the reaction, the response, Mr. Chair, of, uh, the Philippine Autism. Perhaps she can, uh, if she can elucidate my, my confusion regarding the terms that are being used now interchangeably, disorder or disability.
Thank you, uh, Congressman Adyong.
Ms. Velus, you're now recognized.
Thank you for the acknowledgement, sir. Thank you, Congressman Adyong, for the question. The, the, if you look at the DSM five, which is the Diagnostic Manual, the term that medical professionals use is Autism Spectrum Disorder, ASD. But the reality is, when we are talking about legislation, when we are talking about policy, we do not need to take the, um, the medical perspective all the time. So a lot of people use just autism. A lot of people even use, uh, neurodiversity or neurodivergence as an umbrella term for all of the neurodevelopmental conditions. We can talk about, uh, the different terminologies. But the reality is autism is both a medical concern and a social concern. So I think in the, in the realm of legislation, we have to take both perspectives, sir. And in that perspective, autism is both a medical, uh, according to the DSM five, a disorder, and according to how we describe our, uh, how, how we describe disability, also a disability. And, uh, just to, uh, help, I mean, to, if it helps the conversation, sir, in the Philippines, we know only of one, uh, genetic study group that has been looking at autism, and that is the Ateneo, uh, the, the Ateneo Autism Study Group. They have been studying a subset of autism, and they are looking at, um, you know, they're looking deeply into it if they can, I, they can identify genetic markers that can be associated with autism. And the head of the research study group is Dr. Tippi Stanshanko.
Thank you.
That is all, sir.
Yes, Honorable Adyong.
Yes, my last nalang po, Mr. Chair. Uh, kasi, follow-up ko lang po, uh, sa Philhealth po, I'd like to ask, uh, dun po sa mga developmental, uh, ano yun? Na yung sa, yung doctor.
Therapist.
Ther, no, 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 that's not the, pediatrician. Um, the, the problem is, we have, ano, no? They have very little number of developmental pediatrician. Sometimes yung mga sinasabi ko, sa six months, maguwid ka, di ba? Magkaantay ka or three months, and it, it's quite expensive, ah, it's quite expensive. So dun po, in my case po, dun po sa mga private hospitals where these developmental, uh, physicians, uh, hold clinics, no, for appointments, uh, minsan hindi covered, no, ng, ng fila to how, yung mga appointments, yung assess, yung diagnosis, yung assessment, et cetera, you know, kasi you have to go through series of, ano eh, consultations, eh, di ba? So, uh, ano po yung thoughts yun dito, uh, ma'am, no? Since, is it covered still those yung mga diagnosis assistance? Uh, I mean, yung diagnosis and assessment for, uh, autism children, uh, sa mga, you know, hospitals privately run but accredited by Philhealth? Can that still be covered under you? Kasi it's quite expensive eh. In my case, parang hindi ko na-experience po yun eh. Doctor Santillan?
Yes, sir. Uh, sir, thank you sa question po ninyo, no? Noong nilabas po namin yung benefits package for children with disabilities, specifically this, uh, children with disabilities, with developmental disabilities, uh, hindi lang pang government, it's also for, for private. Kasi di ba ang coverage po ng, uh, national health insurance is everyone is covered. Ang gap po kasi, the private sector should participate in the program. So, uh, kung yung private hospital po na yun, will participate, tapos oo, makokontrak po sila ng programa, uh, we will be able to finance the services.
Meaning po, conditional po siya? If, uh, the, if, if, uh, the private hospitals enroll in your program, then that's the time they can be covered by your benefit package?
Ah, opo, uh, sa developmental disabilities po, hindi kasi siya only accreditation. Accreditation po, ito yung usual natin na ginagawa. But for developmental disabilities, this is very special, uh, services. So we want to make sure that if that facility participates in the program, it will be able to deliver the service. Opo, kasi we want to have good outcomes for the patients or for the family, for the individual accessing the services. So there's a contract. So if a private hospital wants to participate, it's a contracting process, which is on top of the usual accreditation process.
So hindi po siya automatic that it's universal covered by your program, the benefits? It's, it only makes, uh, the, the package available for, uh, certain hospitals if they have enrolled. And maskiya credit eh sila if they have enrolled in the program or applied in the program, ganun po ba?
The, the private hospitals po should, should, uh, want to express their intention to participate in the program. But the service and the coverage is universal po, sir. Kaya lang, ang problem kasi yung access, yung access, sir, minsan, it's, if it's a private, uh, I don't know what's the problem, but maybe it's organizing a team. Uh, kasi sir, di ba in your experience, you go directly to the doctor? Yeah, but, uh, when we developed the policy, we wanted to make sure that it's a team approach. So there's a doctor, there's a OT, a speech. So everybody's involved for the, for good outcomes of the patient, not only the doctor who just wants. And it, it makes the, the line, the waiting time very long if it's just the doctor.
Okay, kasi I'm just, I'm, I'm asking this, Mr. Chair, because, uh, in my case, no? I would say medyo fortunate tayo, kasi nakakaavail tayo ng maganong services. But yung mga ibang indigent, yung marginalized, na hindi sila makaavail na ganun, kasi it's quite expensive, di ba?
It's expensive po eh, it's, you wait for a year, and, uh, you're seen by the, by the neurode- developmental pediatrician for about an hour, and it's more than five thousand pesos for that session.
Maybe, Mr. Chair, it's worth also revisiting, no? It's worth also revisiting the, uh, the universal health coverage, uh, that we just legislated. Perhaps we can do some probably possible amendments in the future, no? Should there be? Kasi gusto natin yung services na ito. I know that there's a challenge in terms of supply, but we can start from there, no? From probably expanding, improving the, 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 the law so that we can in, incorporate all possible, uh, su- uh, possible, ano, no? Uh, ano ito gito? Um, support that we can give, uh, to families uh, with the, ano, my, my family members with, diagnosed with autism spectrum. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Adyong, Honorable Roque.
Mr. Chair, point of clarification again, uh, from, uh, our resource person from Philhealth. Does it also follow, doctor, that, um, kung hindi naacredit ang facility or hospital for the package that we are offering for families with children or adults of autism or any other special needs? Pag hindi naacredit dahil ang hospital hindi humingi ng accreditation, hindi na sila makakakuha ng, ng any bene- benefits from at least one of the, the groups na pwedeng magprovide ng service. Say for example, a hospital only has a developmental pediatrician, but not necessarily have somebody from speech therapy, occupational therapy, behavioral therapy, any other kind of therapies that the child might need. any other kind of therapies that the child might need? Hindi niyo maaacredit siya, or sila mismo ang hindi nagpapaacredit? Or pag hindi sila naacredit, does it also follow na hindi sila licensed? Hindi ba, hindi ba acknowledged 'yung facility or at least 'yung clinic na nagpo-provide ng service? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Doctor Santilian?
Yes, uh, thank you, ma'am. Ginawan po namin ng paraan 'yan, because when we looked at the, 'yun nga po, 'yung supply side, we saw this scenario. Uh, sometimes wala 'yung team. So we made sure that, for example, a private hospital is interested, pwede siya makipag memorandum of understanding with another provider. Uh, for example, for Southern Philippines Medical Center, wala silang speech pathologist. So ang ginawa ng Southern Philippines Medical Center, naghanap siya ng mga speech pathologist in private practice. So they were on board and they were able to deliver the service. So maybe it's a manner of communicating the benefits to our health facilities to be involved in the program, because hindi naman kailangan sila lang, they can have a MOA or an agreement with other service providers. Basta we want to make sure that it's a team approach, because the doctor cannot handle it alone. The doctor just does the assessment and the prescription, but the one giving the services is actually the OT, the PT, and the speech pathologist. So they have to be on board, and these professionals are outside the hospital, actually, they're in private practice. Yes, opo.
And those members of the team have to be accredited?
Uh,
To avail?
Yes, po, babayaran naman. Yes, po, uh, we made sure that the professional fees are already included in the reimbursements.
Um, okay, can I? For your question, Honorable Roque.
Point, manifestation.
Yes, you have.
Yes, Mr. Chair, kung pwede. If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh.
Manifest lang ako. Um, medyo mabigat sa amin dun i- kung Adyong, kasi pareho kami 'yung mga magulang ng batang may special needs, especially autism. Ilang taon sa iyo, kung? Five years old pa lang siya, you have many years to go. Ang anak ko twenty-three na. Maraming dinaanan ako sa buhay ko. Umabot ako sa point na umalis ako sa trabaho ko para lang alagaan ko 'yung anak ko. Isa lang sa pamilya ang pwedeng magtrabaho pag meron batang may autism. Hindi niyo na-iimagine 'yung effort ng parent para lang mabuhay niya 'yung bata, para lang matanggap siya sa society. Tapos 'yung mga benefits na hindi namin makuha, dahil maraming kinakailangan para lang makuha namin 'yun, ang daming requirements. Eto, tayo ko, afford ko. Pero sa lahat ng taong hindi nakaka-afford, nararamdaman ko 'yung problema nila. Imagine niyo ilang buwan, minsan taon, para lang maghintay na makakuha ka ng isang service lang. Madiagnose lang 'yung anak mo, minsan kailangan pabalikin ka pa. Pagbabalik ka, wala ka na namang schedule. Hindi maganda ang nangyayari ngayon, kasi aside from that, pupunta ako dun sa sinabi ni doktora, punta ka dun sa speech therapist. Pagpunta mo dun, bibigyan ka ng services for how many months? Mamaya malaman mo lumipad na 'yung teacher mo, nasa abroad na. Pinigan ka ng speech, pinigan ka ng occupational, lahat na lang ang therapy kukunin ko. Pero hindi 'yan napakadali para sa mga taong hindi nakaka-afford. So ano ang dapat natin gawin? Kasi ang kailangan natin gawin, mas mabigyan natin ng panahon. Anong dapat nating, anong pwedeng magawa? Eto, kasi ngayon, sabi ko kay Mr. Chair, hindi ako satisfied. Eto na lang, sa Philhealth, hindi natin maibigay kung hindi natin mabigay 'yung buong team. Eh, papaano na lang, kung hanggang dun pa lang siya? Kasi hindi mabigay ng iba, hindi na nga tayo makaschedule sa isang doktor dun pa sa ibang therapist. Papano mo pa ipapagsama 'yun? Di, hindi mo na talaga makukuha 'yung benepis natin. Paano na lang, mga lahat na lang, nakapunta na ako, from Mindanao po ako. Ang anak ko, pinalaki ko siya doon. Sa totoo lang, ang laki ng bigat ng puso ko, kasi sinabihan ako na hindi ko na makikilala 'yung anak ko from that time na na-diagnose siya. Nanalungkot ako, kasi extreme siya, Mr. Chair. Hindi na siya, ano, hindi siya makapagsalita, dinalako siya sa Manila. We had to make him, I just had to do something para lumabas 'yung boses niya. Dinalako siya sa, kung saan-saan mga therapist, binitay na patiwarik ang anak ko. Hindi niyo maintindihan anong nararamdaman ng isang nanay? So naintindihan ko 'yung nangyayari ngayon, na kailangan natin ng isang legislation na magpo-protekta sa mga batang katulad nila. Anak natin sila. Kung tayo, marami mga magulang, kaya nilang alagaan ng mga anak nila, papaano na lang ang ilang porsyento ng buong bansa na may batang may autism? Kung hindi lang ganin, uh, autism, pati iba-ibang klase pang needs na mga batang may special needs. So, sa narinig ko po ngayon, natutuwa po ako na minensyonin niyo tungkol sa TESDA. Sana po talaga, kung nandito sana 'yung representative niyo, resource person natin kanina. Kinukwento po kanina sa kulig na, kanina na, kung pwede, uh, mabigyan ng panahon, mailagay natin sa TESDA, uh, training para sa, hindi lang sa mga magulang, sa mga yaya, kung sino pang kasama sa household. Training kung papaano mag-alaga ng bata na may special needs. Kasi hindi kaya ng mga professionals, para ating pupuntahan mo, nawawala sila. Lumilipad sila, for some reason, kung pwede, gawa ng paraan ng gobyerno na masuportahan natin sila well enough na hindi sila lilipad, kasi nagahanap sila ng mas magandang sweldo sa labas. Mas malaki ang compensation nila, kasi mas malaki ang importansya ng ibang bansa ba? Sa mga batang may autism or ng special needs? Mas malaki ba ang importance nila? Tayo hindi, kaya lumala ba silang lahat? Kaya hindi natin aavail 'yung services kahit pa, magaroon tayo ng maraming kurso sa mga universidad, sa CHED. Kahit pa, bigyan na natin sila ng opportunity, magkaroon ng mga scholarship sa mga ganyang mga kurso. Lalabas at lalabas 'yan kung hindi natin gagawa ng paraan. Ang sama ng pakiramdam ko, sa totoo lang, sumasakit ang ulo, kasi twenty-three years old na 'yung anak ko, dinalako pa rin siya sa Manila para makapag-aral, just to find out after the pandemic, nagsarado ang school. Pagkasara niya, hindi ko na alam kung saan ko ilalagay 'yung anak ko. Inuuwi ko na naman siya sa bukid nun. Tapos nandito ako, ay paano na 'yan? So uuwi at uuwi talaga ako para balikan ko lang anak ko, at nandito ko para din sa anak ko. Tayong lahat nandito para sa mga anak natin, hindi lang dahil hindi sila special, pero sa mga kapitbahay natin, na magbibenepisyo, ang mga pamilya nila, mga kaibigan ninyo, mga kamag-anak ninyo, lahat 'yan mahukunin, iintindihan niyo 'yan later on, bakit kailangan natin to gawa ng paraan? So hopefully, Mr. Chair, ang mga legislation na ipapasa natin, Mr. Chair. Talaga naman, sanang mabigyan na ng panahon, solusyon ang mga problema ganito para sa mga batang may special needs, especially sa autism na pinapasa natin ngayon. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Roque. Honorable Roque, we are in this together.
Mr. Chair?
Uh.
Uh, sir. Uh, uh.
Uh, Ms. Cabason?
Yes. Um, may I request that, uh, an adult with autism be recognized so that he can make some comment regarding this, um, hours, our discussions? Um, they said they have a group of self advocates, adults with autism, many of them already working, and they are organizing themselves into a group, which is Philippine Neurodivergent, uh, Self Advocates. So if you can just recognize Mr. Redley Go, so he could express also his concerns?
Yes, we, I was about to recognize him. So, Mr. Redley Go? Redley Go, you are now recognized?
Thank you, uh, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Chair, for recognizing us self advocates and for inviting us to be part of this very, very important, uh, meeting. Um, so, um, on the part of, uh, us autistic self advocates as well as other neurodivergent people that I've been talking to over the past few weeks, um, we, we really echo the, you know, the urgency that is needed in order to pass policies that are, uh, able to address, like, especially our problems once we start entering the workforce. Um, but, uh, I guess one of the major concerns we have about, um, the current direction of, uh, policymaking is, um, so often, um, us actually autistic people, neurodivergent people, we're not here when, when it comes to the actual policymaking process. Um, and that, it's really unfortunate, because we have so much inputs that we would love to, uh, bring forth to the table, that we would love to contribute. Um, you know, especially since, you know, we're all in this together, we want to do what's best for, um, you know, Philippine, uh, Filipino people, you know, with autism, with other neurodivergent conditions across the country. Um, so, um, some of the concerns, for instance, that we've, um, discussed in the many meetings that I've, uh, with the many discussions I've had with other autistic people, other people with ADHD and other conditions is, um, uh, our, our, our issues when it comes to the workplace, that a lot of us are actually marginalized, uh, in many ways. Um, so, for example, um, in terms of employment, we do not really have, uh, a lot of us do not get the opportunity to get employed, especially, um, those on the spectrum. Um, and if we do get employed, oftentimes we're, um, employed under part-time work, work arrangements, um, where we don't earn, um, we, we earn substandard wages, we, um, we're often sometimes discriminated against in the workplace, and we don't know how to, um, speak up about it. And actually, one of the big problems then, uh, in the workplace is that a lot of autistic people and a lot of new, that neurodivergent people, so not just autistic people, also ADHD people, also other, uh, other conditions, like dyslexia. We, we're scared to talk about our conditions, we, we're scared to disclose our, our actual, um, our actual disabilities, and because of that, we do not get to, um, we do not get to request for reasonable accommodations at work. Um, and even right now, I believe there are no laws that specify that, uh, ad- adults with autism or other neurodivergent conditions are, um, given reasonable accommodations at work. Um, so we hope maybe this could be addressed in the policies that are being drafted. Um, and hopefully, maybe we can extend it as well to, um, all neurodivergent conditions, uh, since this is actually a shared problem, regardless if you have Down Syndrome, regardless if you have, uh, autism spectrum disorder or ADHD. Um, we all, um, face these problems in the work, workplace when it comes to, you know, um, you know, discrimination, um, employment, and so on. So that's one of the points. Uh, another point is, um, I believe it's important, uh, for us to transition beyond mere autism awareness, because, um, um, well, what we need is autistic, autistic acceptance that, um, we are already at the point where a lot of people know what autism is, but, um, you know, on the matter of inclusion and acceptance into our workplaces, into our schools, um, there's still a big gap because of the stigma that exists, um, that when people see an autistic person, they do, they, they often underestimate us, they think we can't speak for ourselves, that we can't, uh, be independent uh, and participative members of society. And, um, we're hoping that these bills, um, could address that aspect of acceptance, that how do you ensure that our workplaces, our, um, our schools, our other institutions truly include us, um, beyond tokenism? Because, um, it's not enough to simply have us present in the, you know, in our classrooms, in our, in our workplaces, in our meetings here, uh, together with the Committee on Health. We have to actually be involved in the process, um, especially when it comes to policy, um, you know, drafting policy, since, especially for self advocates, we have so many connections to other, um, other, other autistic people, other neurodivergent people, um, so many, um, stories, so many, um, so many problems that, um, in fact, there are too many to list down in one meeting. Uh, and, uh, we, I guess our main point as self advocates is we, we would like for these bills to hopefully include us, uh, in the process of, um, you know, fleshing out the actual content. We would like to be, we would like to have a seat on the table, um, when it comes to, you know, um, drafting the policies and even implementing the policies, um, as, uh, as, um, you know, in, in, it's also noted in the bills, like, uh, that there will be autism councils, we would also like to, um, you know, clarify them, uh, whether, uh, the, the House Bill two twenty-nine, which provides for one person with autism on the proposed autism council, like, what are the qualifications for that? Uh, and, um, if, you know, if there is a possibility for that to be expanded, since we, as, um, autistic people are the main stakeholders, um, that are, you know, to benefit supposedly from the bills, um, that perhaps, you know, we could expand that. And, and finally, um, in, in terms of like our inputs as self advocates, we would like to request to be able to, uh, submit a position paper containing all of our concerns, um, which is really comprehensive, um, that, um, honestly, uh, it would take the whole day if I were to list down all of them. Um, we would just love, we would love to be involved in the process. Um, and, um, and once again, um, we are really happy to have this opportunity to speak about our, our issues, uh, our struggles, um, coming misma from us. Um, as the, as the global disability rights movement, um, slogan goes, um, nothing about us without us. So that goes especially for policymaking, that we would love to be involved. Um, so thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. Um, and we are looking forward to future meetings, future policy, uh, consultations, um, working together with all, all of you, uh, as, uh, our fellow, uh, for lawmakers as well as the organizations, uh, who are involved. Um, so thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Redley Go, uh, for inspiring us. Um, before we act on the creation of the TWG to harmonize the bills, may I, uh, ask a few questions? Uh, we all know, and we have been discussing this since the, uh, start of the meeting, that the key to the management of autism is diagnosis. I think umpisa tayo sa diagnosis. Kasi kailangan madiagnose mo na na, detection, early detection is, uh, very important. So my question is, who makes the diagnosis? Kaninong diagnosis binibase ng Philhealth or any other, um, uh, agencies that handles or takes care of the, uh, persons with autistic, uh, autism spectrum? Kaninong diagnosis? Is it the developmental pediatrician, neurodevelopmental pediatrician? Or just any other pediatrician? Uh, anyone can answer? Doctor Santilian?
Uh, thank you, sir, for raising that question. Uh, when I was a medical student, I was already married and I had, um, a child with disability. And the first thing that I learned from, uh, my teacher is, uh, you diagnose autism as early as possible because you have to institute the intervention before two years old. And, uh, what I learned is that the first sign is that the child has no eye contact.
Yeah.
So I guess we don't have to depend all the time on the doctors. We have to be educated as, as people of the Philippines, we have to understand and become aware that these things happen. So when, when two people become parents, maybe it's part of their, uh, orientation during marriage council or whatever.
I understand, Doctor Santilian, lahat tayo, uh, doctors, uh, parents, uh, kailangan natin, uh, tawag natin na mga doctor, no, high index of suspicion, di ba? Or any unusual signs, uh, newborn. Uh, kailangan natin manitetekyan, but siyempre, we need to confirm our suspicion para may establish natin 'yung diagnosis. Kasi very important talaga, as I've said, the diagnosis, we have to start from the diagnosis. So I'm asking, kanino natin, or where do we rely, or what basis ang, ang diagnosing ng, ng autism? Kaninong, uh, diagnosis? Can we rely on the general practitioner's, uh, uh, diagnosis? Can we rely on the general pediatrician? Or it, it has to be from the developmental, neurodevelopmental pediatrician? My question is, where do we base our diagnosis officially? Yes, uh, Doctor Santilian?
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you again for that. I'm actually a pediatrician, sir. So in training, we have to, uh, be aware of the, the, the normal developmental milestones of a child. So as a general pediatrician, we can already detect if something is wrong because a parent will bring that child to our clinic and will say, "My child is not talking to me. My, my child, there's something off about my child." And then we do our own assessment and then we refer to the neurodevelopmental pediatrician or the behavioral pediatrician.
Yes.
Yes. So we rely on the official diagnosis of the specialist.
Yes, so we need a specialist to establish the diagnosis. So kailangan talaga natin ang developmental pediatrician. So my next question is, how many developmental pediatricians do we have in the Philippines? Yes, uh, um, Miss Kabason?
Um, as of now, we have only less than eighty developmental pediatricians nationwide.
So we have, we have eighty practicing developmental pediatrician from where we base our data? On the incidence or prevalence of autism spectrum, persons with, uh, autism spectrum? So how many percent of these eighty practicing developmental pediatricians are in Metro Manila? How many are in Visayas? How many are in, ano, do we have, uh, data on that? Yes, uh.
There's a society, sir. There's a professional society of these, uh, specialists and, uh, most of them are in urban settings, most of them in NCR.
Yes.
A handful in the Visayas and Mindanao because there are training programs in Metro Manila. For example, Philippine Children's Medical Center and Philippine General Hospital. So they would be able to track where their, uh, trainees would later on practice. But the data on this, it's with the professional societies.
So, so the, we only have eighty developmental, developmental pediatrician? Sila lang talaga ang nakakadiagnose, nakakaestablish ng diagnosis. And this is where we base the management. Because as we have said, autism is a spectrum. So from the near normal to the severe type. So if it's a spectrum, we cannot standardize the management. So we really need a subspecialist or the developmental pediatrician. So dito pa lang nakikita natin na talagang napakalaki ng problema natin sa autism. Uh, that's number one. Uh, number two, in the diagnosis, uh, kanina, we were discussing about, it's not the disease, it's not, uh, disorder. Uh, officially, we base the diagnosis from the DSM three ba? Five? Halatang matanda na ako, no, DSM three pa no, medical student ako. So DSM five. And it is, it falls under the mental disorder. So balik ako dun sa question, if it's not the disease, if it's not the disorder, then what is it? Uh, anyone from the department? Maybe you have an official statement from the Department of Health?
Um, I'm, based on, uh, the notes that are given to me, sir. Um, it could be under, uh, could be categorized as a disability because, uh, they have consequences later on on the ten disabilities that we are, um, surveilling under our, um.
So it's a disability?
If that is acceptable to the affected family, sir.
No, I mean, what is the position of the DOH? Is it a disability?
I, I, I need to go back to our, um, technical.
Okay, so I'd like to hear the official position of the DOH. What is it really? Uh, may we hear from, uh, Doctor Abadi from the Philippine Council of Mental Health?
Hello, um, good morning, Mister Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify some of the things. First of all, Mister Chair, I would like also to address the questions on who can diagnose our individuals, children, adolescent, adult with autism spectrum disorder. Why we recognize that, um, it is the developmental pediatrician, but child and adolescent psychiatrists, one who's specialized with, not only with mental health disorder, but also neurodevelopmental disorder, can also diagnose autism spectrum disorder? And, and, um, in my professional practice, we have been handling also, um, autism, patients or individuals with autism spectrum disorder. And then we work hand in hand, no, with developmental pediatrician. And with regards to the disorder, when it comes to autism spectrum disorder, the question of it is a disorder or disability have raised, um, many questions. It's particularly put today, no? Autism spectrum disorder based on the DSM five, fifth edition of mental health, is this defined as a developmental disability based on a neurodevelopmental disorder? Meaning to say it is brain related. The disorder occurs when brain development is impaired by a number of structural and functional abnormalities. And though despite an advance in medicine, cause is not yet known. Many studies have said it's multifactorial during the development, sapitos palangpo, environmental. So even when it comes to assessment and diagnosing, we also have, we do not have a biological markers. We do not have a blood test. Walahu tayong imaging study that can say and explain the autism spectrum disorder. What we have in order to diagnose is by observing behaviors. Core symptoms based from DSM five or ICD-10 International Classification of Disease, which for them, they called it as childhood autism. But for DSM five, it autism spectrum disorder. So we have seen many opposing views. Um, even approaches and objectives have fired up rivalries among parents, individuals, um, even with medical professionals, pediatrician, child and adolescent psychiatrists, and even po developmental pediatrician. But I am with you po, Mister Chair, um, and of course, the honorable authors of the different bills that our society po, the pills, bills being proposed is pushing for acceptance of, you know, diversity and rejection po ng labels that define and limit, um, their identity as well. So again po, um, with child and adolescent psychiatrists, we can diagnose and we can also treat them po. And with developmental pediatrician na sa eighty plus, for child and adolescent psychiatrists are only about seventy din po in the whole country with five hundred general psychiatrists po in practice. So I hope po somehow it clears po the.
So you are saying, you're saying, Doctor Abadi, that, uh, the child and adolescent psychiatrist and then neurodevelopmental pediatricians are recognized to diagnose autism with, uh, autism, uh, autism with spectrum disorder? Uh, am I correct, uh, Doctor Abadi?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. I hope, uh, in the TWG, the definition will be, um, uh, uh, be, be cleared up, uh, uh, in the next meeting. Um, uh, another question, uh, we have, as we realize now, we have very few practicing developmental pediatricians. How many accredited training institutions are, are producing or are, are training, um, pediatricians? Some, uh, some specialist pediatrician or neu- or, or neurodevelopmental pediatricians? How many are there in the Philippines? I know one, is it PGH?
Uh, because sir, the accreditation of the training is with the professional societies. But we do know that there are two, Philippine General Hospital and the Philippine Children's Medical Center.
Okay, so, uh, at least we only have, we know of only two. And I understand, every year, how many are produced? Two, five? Uh, anyone who can answer?
Sir, when I was at Philippine Children's Medical Center, we have a neurodevelopmental section. And, uh, every year, they accept about two or three fellows. And then, uh, every year, they produce about two or three fellows. And it's difficult because, uh, for example, in PCMC, before you go into neurodevelopmental subspecialty, you have to finish first your specialization in you, in neurology. So it's difficult. But in Philippine General Hospital, you can go straight from, um, pediatrics, you can go straight to developmental pediatric. So it's lesser training at Philippine General, yes.
There are only few training hospital for developmental pediatrician. And of the few training institution, they only produce maybe less than five or ten a year. And here we have an approximate of about a million, uh, in our country. And that is under diagnosed, uh, I would say more. Uh, because, uh, we do not have enough developmental pediatrician to establish the diagnosis. I'm sure there are many, uh, misdiagnosed, uh, uh, babies or patients. Oh, mali daw ang word na patient, no? Wag daw natin tawagan ng patient. So, uh, minors that are labeled as not normal, but we don't know because there is no, no one, no expert to diagnose or to help us in the diagnosis. Because diagnosis is the key to proper management of autism. And of course, siempre pagkatapos ng diagnosis, we need other allied medical profession. We need the community, we need the family members, we need institutions to manage an autistic or, or patient, uh, person with autism, autism spectrum. So on that note, I think, um, we need to, we need to, uh, create a technical working group to harmonize the bills, taking note of the inputs from our, um, esteemed resource person. Thank you very much. Uh, so anyone, uh, do I hear a motion to create a technical working group?
Mister Chair?
Yes, Honorable, uh, Roque?
I move that we, uh, create a technical working group for the following House bills that are concerned with the comprehensive autism care plan. Um, so.
Uh, Mister Chair, uh, before I second, just a quick manifestation, uh, this is, uh.
Honorable Abiang?
Yes, uh, this is, uh, relative to the manifestation and observation of the chair. Mister Chair, but I think when we create the TWG, we have to also be, be guided as to the terms that are to be used properly because we are not only, uh, passing or introducing a legislation that would address the gaps in terms of the services we provide for persons diagnosed with autism, but we also need to break the stigma. I think language is very important, uh, in the way we approach the issue. Uh, the reason why so many, you mentioned, Mister Chair, so many, there probably millions undiagnosed because of the parents' fear that they might, their children might be exposed to bullying or ano kasi buang, alam yun? Ah, buang yan. I mean, culturally, we Filipinos, you know, we, there's a, well, there's a lack of acceptance of the possibility that anybody can be, or any family, uh, maybe have a members, immediate member, family members that are considered to be, or undiagnosed, no? Kasi 'yung buang nun. So we are not only focusing on providing solutions and addressing the problem, but we are also in a way breaking the stigma. So I think, uh, language is very much important in how do we craft, uh, in consolidating this legislation. So with that, Mister Chair, having said that, I, I second the motion, the creation of a technical working group to consolidate all the six measures pertaining to, uh, the autism care, uh, plan. Thank you, Mister Chair.
So there's a motion by Honorable Roque, uh, duly seconded by Honorable Abiang, that we create a technical working group to consolidate, harmonize the six, uh, bills, um, on autism. Uh, uh, and may I, and hearing no objection, the motion is, um, approved. And may I, um, request or order, if I may, uh, Honorable Roque to, uh, chair the, uh, technical working group, uh.
Okay, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Roque.
I move, Mister Chair, without any further discussion, uh, move that we adjourn.
Yeah.
Uh, the session, uh, the.
The hearing. There's a duly seconded motion that, uh, there are matters, there are no matters to discuss them. That the motion be adjourned, so hearing no objection. The, uh, meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you very much, uh, honorable members of this committee. Thank you very much, uh, esteemed, um, resource person, Yusek Tapales, Doctor Melissa Senna, Doctor Santillan, uh, Miss Merla Rose Reyes, uh, Mister Belasteros. Uh, sorry, I.
Thank you, the Chair.
Uh, Miss Kabason, uh, Mister Dimabiles, and all those, I, I can't, I can't read your names there. Thank you very much for your inputs. Rest assured that, uh, we will take note and we will, uh. Incorporate your inputs to the, uh, to the bills. Maraming, maraming salamat. Thank you very much.
Sir, can we still submit our position paper? Can we still submit our position paper regarding these bills?
Uh, yes, yes, please, uh, submit your position papers to this committee. Uh, thank you very much, thank you very much.